America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our newest member, Paula Bertram.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our first order. Oh, I'm sorry. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. And our first order of business is board reorganization. We take nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Matthew Allison for chair.
Second. Excellent. All in favor on that?
You could ask if there's any other nominations.
Okay. Well, are there any other nominations? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Nominations for vice chair. Speak up at once.
I'll take it if you want to nominate.
I'll nominate David for vice chair.
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Take nominations for clerk.
I will nominate Ken Chenus for clerk.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, excellent. Okay. That's done. Good.
That's right.
And roll call, we are all here. Public comment. Is there any public comment not relating to anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. We don't have any board comment, but is there any board comment?
I just have a quick question. Madri, do you have an extra agenda because I didn't have one in my package? And I like to take notes on it. Thank you.
Our first item is an A&R plan for 380 Electric Avenue.
Thank you. Greg Roy with DeCharmantillis. And this is the Proctor parcel on Mass Ave, excuse me, Electric Ave. Long day already. And you may recall last year we were before, well, two years ago, I guess, were before you for the car wash project. And at that time, we actually, as part of the, primarily because of the sewer concerns, we had consolidated the lots on the one piece of property. Since then, the Proctors have been approached by a developer who is seeking to use the portion of the property where the retail store presides, currently sits, for the, for a donut shop and gas station. That's been in the public record. We came before the zoning board of appeals for several variances and, excuse me, special permits earlier this year. So this A&R plan would subdivide the lot into two lots. One lot, let me make sure I get this straight. One of the lots which is entitled, and I'm assuming you have this in your packet, the plan, okay. Lot one would be for the car wash and the excavation business, the red building there that you see. And lot two would be for the new project, for the new gas station project. So this plan subdivides to make that possible. Really, lot two is for what would be sold ultimately to the developer. That hasn't hap, obviously hasn't happened yet, but they have an agreement in place to do that. So the Proctors approached us to do this now from a, more from a financing and planning standpoint with the land deal. There's two site plans that you need to see still, that you will see. There will be a modification of the site plan that you approve for the car wash, which if you recall, located the existing red building on, as part of it. We'll be modifying that through a new site plan approval process with your board to move that to a different spot than was currently shown. And of course, there'll be a full site plan development process for the new gas station property. So both lots are in excess of the required acreage frontage. And feel free to chime in if I say something incorrect to Adam. I'm assuming you've had a chance to take a look at it. And also, from a sewer standpoint, this configuration complies with the regulation. If you recall, there was an issue with whether or not we could subdivide and have a, and create a situation where the sewer would be in easement, which is what came up primarily last time. This configuration actually avoids that. So the existing red building, which is number 390, the existing car wash, which is number 380, are, have one sewer line which remains on lot one and connects to the sewer easement trunk line that goes through the back of lot one. And then the existing retail store, number 400, actually connects through Dana Street, which is to the south. So that has direct access as well. So this actually addresses the concerns that we had from back then. So I'll be quiet. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Just out of curiosity, I don't think this has any bearing on the A&R at all, but what is the easement that's on that, on lot one?
Lot one, that's the sewer easement. So there's a big trunk easement that comes down from John Street.
Okay.
And comes down into the, where it says pump station. That's the town's.
Oh, right there. Okay, yep.
Yeah, the town has that easement over.
Got it.
The Proctor land for the lift station.
Could you tell me why there's double lines on the extension from the square at the pump station?
I think that one is a construction easement.
Okay.
I think the permanent, do you know the answer?
That's correct.
Okay. So the inner two lines are the, are the permanent easement where the, and then the outer lines are, were for construction.
Okay.
And they just translated.
So the actual pump sta, station easement now will span lot one and lot two?
Yes, it will. Yep. Yeah, that rectangle is that Dana Street, the, excuse me, easterly Dana Street line extended is the, is the edge of that easement there, so.
Is there a required setback for the pump station?
No.
No?
I mean, the pump station exists. This A&R wouldn't make it. You mean from the, from the front line?
No, is that, is that lot line adjacent to the existing?
Can you put the property line that close to it?
Not quite sure if that's a new line or an existing line, property line.
The new, the solid line is a new line.
So what is the distance from the pump station to the property line?
Yeah, that's a good question. Peter Moore, forgive me.
And would that be considered the front or the side of the pump station?
Pretty sure that'd be a side lot line.
I think that would be a side. What's this?
And this was reviewed by the building inspector, so it wasn't an issue that was raised in his review.
Well, the dimension's not on the plan either.
Yeah, we didn't dimension it. You're correct.
But he was given a full-size scaled plan.
Okay.
It is less than 20. It's 18, 19 feet.
Hmm.
He's been pretty.
Sorry, excuse me, one second. I couldn't hear your question, but you asked if the easement was going to be on lot one and lot two? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, well, the way it's documented, it looks like the easement will be on lot one and on lot two.
That's correct.
But it also puts the pump station too close to the property line by the offset guidelines for structures. So the structure has to be a minimum of 20 feet from the lot line?
Is that just the pad or is that a building? Like the concrete pad?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you located, but there's a building and there's a pad, there's both, so I don't know what you actually located on that.
I don't know. Probably the whole pad. But I don't know.
Well, it's 18 feet roughly, scaling on a 40 scale plan, but it's less, I can tell you it's less than 20. I think we may have loca, we may be showing the entire pad where the wet well would sit and all that. But I don't, I unfortunately did not have that answer for you tonight.
And the 20-foot offset would apply to a pump station?
It does say all buildings.
Yeah, mine says any structure.
So it is a structure. It's not owned or operated by.
It doesn't exempt the town.
It, but there's nothing that, yeah, exactly. There's nothing that exempts municipal buildings from any of the setbacks.
So the only trouble with approving the A&R is if we created nonconforming.
Correct. Created nonconformity.
And we're not supposed to do that.
Not even you're not supposed to, you're not allowed to.
I'm trying to be nice. Is there, oh, I mean, this might be resolved with a simple survey, just to validate that dimension that's in this document is to the structure.
Yeah, I mean, we probably.
If the structure is further than 20 feet from the proposed lot line, then just document the plan.
Right.
Come back and approve it.
Right, right. Yeah, we could add, add the structure on there and document.
Yeah, when I looked at it, that was the only thing that I saw that.
No, you are.
Question in mind.
Correct. I'm trying to see if I can find it. I'll have to, yeah, I can see it. It's, it says, yeah. We'll have to, we'll have to get that information to you, so.
Okay.
I guess, is there any other?
No.
Comments?
Everything else looks good to me, just, yeah.
Yeah, it looks fine except for that.
Okay.
And a question, I remember it came up when the car wash was permitted. Are you still parking buses on the lot?
No buses.
No more buses?
The buses are gone forever.
Okay. Oh.
That came up at the zoning board meeting as well.
Couple months ago, they bought the property down at 35 Mass Ave.
And just a general question for you, Adam, would be, is the site plan, the site plan revision, would that be okay coming after the approval of an A&R?
Yeah. That, I mean, the, it's going to be what it's going to be. It's objective at this point. They've received their approvals from the zoning board for the uses. So they haven't moved anything, so they haven't changed that site plan. They still own all of this property. So there's, the site plan is still intact. And when they come and apply for the modification, at that point, I'm, again, I, you know, I know Dan and I have talked about this a little bit, well, most likely be before the conveyance of the other property. So they'll have an approved site plan prior to any major changes to the site that would affect the site plan.
Good. Also, not related to the A&R, is the existing structure being reused or is that being replaced by the proposed?
The red building? The red building is being relocated.
Okay.
So it'll stay the same as far as, you know, office space, what have you. The old SkyCycle building will be torn down.
Oh, so that is going away. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you. I apologize for the inconvenience on that.
Not at all.
We'll be back at you. Thank you.
Next up, we have another A&R plan for 388 and 390 Goodrich Street.
The applicant here. We don't know who the applicant is.
I'm here for that.
Whoever they are, I wouldn't know them by sight.
Nobody's here for that?
William Chisholm and Kim Tarky?
Well. Hmm. Should we just put it off? You can still approve it.
Want to act on it?
Yeah. Yeah. It's a lot line adjustment.
Okay.
So you can see there's an existing lot line that they are moving to, I believe it's to allow for the common drive and some, some well space.
So the existing lot line is the dashed line?
Yeah, the existing lot line's the dashed line, and then they're changing it to this jagged line that goes around the other structures.
Correct.
So they're swapping a pond and a shed.
So they're doubling that, basically the area of lot one A.
Yeah, lot one becomes much, much bigger.
Correct.
Double size.
So I did actually have a question on this one. But if you look at this on Google Earth or Google Maps, there's a whole bunch of structures in this area.
There's a what?
There are a bunch of structures in this area that would potentially be changing from one lot to the other lot. Is that of those, is that part of this or, because they're not on this document?
Where are the structures you're talking about?
They're just, if you, if you hold this in a north relationship and you see where this existing shed is, just north of this shed, there's a, there's a whole bunch of construction and development there.
So they would still meet setbacks?
I don't know.
We don't know.
Because none of that stuff is on this document.
So I don't know if that's on the other side of the property line or if they're moving the property line so that those structures are on a different property.
Hmm.
But they're, do you have Google Maps?
Are they actually structures?
Yeah. I mean, it looks like a good-sized building.
Okay.
I'm a little bit familiar with this property. I actually did some work on it a number of years ago. And 388 is the old Brown property and used to be a farm, and there's a bunch of like sheds scattered about.
Yeah, is that what it is?
But I don't, and I'm going off of memory here, but I don't, I wouldn't consider any of them to be like permit material, like over 200 square feet or anything like that.
But without knowing that and without the applicant here.
I don't see any structures.
Hold on, let me see. I'm going to bring it up.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, there you go. Here's the applicant.
380, 390.
Yep.
Yes.
Quite all right. Mr. Chisholm?
My name's Russ Wilson. I'm representing.
Excellent. Can you please?
I'm from New South Florida.
Please step up to the microphone for the folks at home.
All right, so, oh, so these structures are these structures here. Okay.
Yeah. As I said, where you were pointing, I didn't see any.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just had the orientation off a little bit on the map.
They've got horses on the property, so they've got like run-in sheds in the paddocks and stuff like that.
And this, this existing shed's going to be 30 feet from the proposed lot line, but it does change, it does change ownership. I mean, it moves on a different.
It's all owned by the same person.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a lot.
Yeah, both lots.
And there's no other structures, right?
Not.
That's it.
All right, yeah, my concern.
So all the structures that are on these properties are currently, are located on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I, my orientation was off on that one. That's all. My bad. All right, I have no other questions. Everything else looked okay to me.
Mr. Chairman, just so that I understand the process, when an A&R is received, that's also sent to all the other land use departments, correct?
It's sent to almost all the other departments.
Okay.
Prior to it being accepted, which is what happens at this meeting.
Okay.
So once the board, the board is presented with the plan, that's the formal filing of the plan. It starts the 21-day clock. And the, two weeks prior, we send it to the other boards to get any comments, concerns, Board of Health, DPW, Tax Collector, Board of Selectmen, Assessor, Conservation, Building, Board of Health. As a, it's not a, it's not a statutory requirement. It's something we do as a courtesy to ensure that plans that are approved don't have a hiccup that comes up later down the line.
Right.
And it helps this board make an educated decision.
Right. And we didn't receive any comments from any department on this?
No.
Okay. The reason that I ask is, I used to work here a very long time ago and worked in the Board of Health, and I don't think it has any bearing on the action by this board. But in looking at the new proposed lot line in relationship to the existing leach field and the reserve area.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure what that distance is, but that appears to be changing significantly. And whether or not it's going to throw it out of compliance with existing regulations, I don't know. I believe it's a 50-foot offset and this, I don't have a scale on this, so I can't see if it's going to meet that.
It's showing 30 feet plus or minus.
Right. So that's a concern. I mean, that's something that the applicant should be aware of, that by, they may actually cause a problem and be out of compliance with their septic system.
Correct. And we actually require, prior to the filing and the distribution, that the Board of Health sign off on a certificate of sorts that says that they've reviewed it and are, you know, not necessarily supportive or that there's an approved design for a new system, but that the requirements of Title V as they're laid out are met to the Board of Health satisfaction.
Okay. And that's on the back of this, I see that.
Correct.
Okay.
That's not the leach field itself, that's beyond the leach field. It's the bottom toe of the fill.
Okay.
That covers my questions.
Good. How many, do we accept the A&R as documented?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sorry I was late.
Not at all.
The jungle out there.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Does he know that?
I think Paul's first signing here.
Pen comes back.
You can't take that.
Thievery.
Oh, she doesn't get the keeper first, Pen.
We need a date. Date, quickly. He's off the door.
Sir, could you hold up?
I'm ready to give you the plan to take with you tonight.
What do you mean?
We're giving you the plan to take with you.
Okay, now I'll take the pen back. Well.
Okay.
I don't know. It's up to you guys. I would think it would theoretically take less time than the following item.
Would you agree that we should swap them?
No.
No.
Okay. Which is why we put them on that way.
So the next on the agenda is an appointment for 651 Chase Road, NewGen pre-submission discussion?
How are you guys?
Good evening. Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
I have a little information package just on battery storage and, and NewGen.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't know how much familiar you guys are. My name's David Milner with NewGen Capital. And this is Aaron Rust. We own and operate two solar projects here in the town of Lunenburg. One of them, at the 651, sells all its power to the town of Lunenburg at a discount. And we actually own the land there as well, so we're a landowner here. And we turned those on in 2014. The, the history for this potential battery being added with solar at 651 is that Unile approached us with an issue they were having on that feeder into that substation where it was too much solar as individuals put it on the houses and that substation was getting back feed. And there was a new program in Massachusetts that the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center was running to give out $20 million of grants to test the use of batteries, which is definitely the future. It's not here yet, but in terms of combining solar and storage, it's, it's right around the corner. So they approached us asking if we'd be interested in hosting that at our site. We said yes and ended up applying for a grant that was then received. So we have this opportunity to put a battery on that location, add solar to it, and have it be sort of the only one in the Unile territory, but also sort of this leading-edge combination of, of storage and solar. Before we went too far, though, we wanted to come to you guys to get your input and feedback, because I know it can be a little bit contentious. And we're coming here seeing it as an opportunity, a win-win, but really wanted to share it with you. It should make that section of the grid more stable. It defers maintenance. I mean, there's a whole pitch as to why the state wanted to see it at that location. And so we are here basically to propose that we do that if you guys are interested in seeing that happen. We would put some of the solar on the land we own and then a neighboring parcel in there. We have a letter that would add some land that would enable more solar. None of it's visible. If you guys have been by Chase Road, it's tucked, tucked away. So I don't anticipate any big issues, but I know it's, it's better to come early and to answer any questions and to tell you what we're thinking about than, than to wait.
Excellent. So you're looking at producing battery, you're going to install battery backup facilities as well as more solar?
Yeah, it would be paired. So the idea is the battery would be sized enough such that the solar from the existing and the new could fill up that battery in the middle of the day where the power isn't needed and then distribute it on the edge, either early morning or when people get home. And so you smooth out that, the grid. And Unile would, is really driving some of the operations of this. We're not battery experts at all. So they, they hired a firm to study it and to add the value, to make sure it added value to the grid. And I guess, you know, that's, it's just a sensitive area at the end of that line.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, Matthew. I didn't mean any disrespect. I threw the chair. I have one other question. Is this going to trigger a reassessment of the existing pilot agreement, do we know, on this particular?
Without having looked at the pilot agreement, I'm not sure. Oftentimes, they're based on a price per kilowatt hour.
Mm-hmm.
Or per kilowatt or megawatt. And I would anticipate that it would kick that up. I don't know that the town has any more power that they have space to buy. So I understand the existing agreement is based on a power purchase agreement and a pilot of some manner or a tax agreement of some manner. So I don't know if the fact that there's additional megawatts that aren't being consumed by the town would alter that tax agreement or would be a separate tax agreement for the additional.
Well, I guess my, my question.
And I guess that would ultimately be up to the Board of Selectmen since they're the ones who negotiated the original.
Yes, so can we be assured of some, do we need to make a motion or something, just to be assured that there's some communication with them?
I can raise the issue with the town manager and town council.
Okay.
And see what their thoughts are. I think, you know, what, what I'm hearing is there's a potential for this project to be filed, that there hasn't been a final decision that this project is going to be brought forward. brought forward, and they're looking for feedback from the board. And I think that the, the matter of the pilot agreement or the, the tax agreement and the impact that this would have on it is probably more of a, once the project is moving forward, we need to address this as.
Sure.
As a, a parallel track to the project itself. You know, I don't, I've had several conversations with representatives from NewGen about this particular issue. We've never discussed the, the tax agreement. I don't think I've ever come across a solar company that wasn't willing and able to enter into a tax agreement for their own purposes, because it's a little bit easier to spread that out over the life of the panels, but I certainly don't want to speak for them. But I think that that's something that would be part of this whole conversation if that were to go forward.
Okay, good.
So, two questions for you. Were you, were you, was NewGen the original permitting on this site?
No.
So, you inherited the pilot?
Yeah, we, so we bought that from Victus, I think was the name of the company that did the permitting and the layout, and it was originally six megawatts is what they were going for, but in their process with the town of Lunenburg, it got shrunk to three and a half megawatts. I don't know all, all the reasons we didn't live that. But, it's actually just under, I'm rounding, but, but we ended up building what is there now, but there was a parcel in the north end that was legit, was, could fit solar, and at that point, it just didn't go through. And then, I believe, sort of towards the road to the right, we haven't, we haven't even gotten a wetland survey yet on the land that we own that doesn't have solar on it, so we have to do a lot more homework to make sure it's appropriate, but there is some land there that we would, that we would also start looking at.
Okay. Oops, sorry.
I'm not opposed to the idea, I think it's a great idea. I, I can, I can tell you that from my perspective, the only, I'll be looking at the buffering, the setbacks, I'll be looking at the wetlands, I will expect you to, you know, file a notice of intent, a new one with Concom, get their feedback on it and see, you know, that's what I'm looking to make sure that the environment is protected and that the neighborhood's protected.
Yep, yep.
That's from, that's what I'll be looking at.
Yeah, that's good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A couple of questions. You mentioned that you were permitting for three, rounding up, three and a half megawatts. You mentioned that this project would require an expansion, and I'm wondering how much of an expansion you're potentially looking at. Additionally, you mentioned a neighboring parcel, and I'm wondering the size of that parcel, and I'm wondering the acreage that would be affected.
So, the, okay, so for the first question, the scale of the battery would have up to four megawatts of additional solar. I don't know that we can fit that, but if you were an engineer and you were ideally designing it, the size of this battery, it would be ideal to have four megawatts of solar.
And you said you're 3.5 right now?
No, I mean, so four additional megawatts.
But you have, you have three and a half now.
Three and a half now.
So, you're basically doubling.
So, basically, it would be ideal. We have not done the work. Panels now are a lot more efficient, and we would obviously draw this and show it, and we, like I said, we don't know that we have room for that. This is just a math thing, because once you get the wetlands, you're going to know what you can fit, and the setbacks and the buffering, all that stuff that is normal. But the panels now are 20% or more, more efficient, and so what you, you know, what did take a lot more land, we can have, be less land, and you can play with the tilt. There's a lot of progress since people were developing in 2012 and 13. So, it, it, a good rule of thumb is five acres can fit now about 1.2 megawatts. So, if you're, you know, if you're going for four megs, you need, you know, less than 20 acres, so you need maybe 15 to 17 acres. And you can play, play with that, but as a rule of thumb, the, you know, we own 110 acres in total there, but the solar is maybe on 20 to 25, but a lot of that land, it's just not good. It's not good for solar for, there's an, there's utility easement with Unatil right down the middle and a diagonal, and there's some wetlands, and so, it's really not all usable. So, my, and then the neighboring parcel, the agreement we have with them was up to 20 acres they own. Was it 50?
Yeah.
60? They own a lot, and it would just be the portion of the parcel that we need that abuts us. We kind of wrap that, that particular parcel.
And the use of that parcel now?
That is, it's just wooded, it's all wooded back up in there. They have a single-family house way up on the road, and then they just own a big rectangle.
I know the property you're talking about.
Okay, yeah.
So, so I would, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of a proponent of solar, so I would be okay with, with the expansion, and provided a, a few things. Because this is just a pre-hearing, I'm going to tell you what, what my feedback would be when you come present this. So, first of all, obviously, you have to fit this all in with regards to the conservation restrictions on the wetlands. There's a lot of wetlands back there.
Yeah.
I, I think there's about 40,000 beaver that live back there or so, that are protected, and they seem to keep making their pool bigger and bigger. There's also quite a bit of multi-use trails that go through that property back there, so I would like to see some kind of preservation that those multi-use trails could continue to be multi-use trails.
Do you know where those are? Or, like, because we, we don't, and which parcel and what, what they go through?
Yeah, we, we probably have them GPSed. I could, I could get that information to you if you want that information. Some of them are no longer in use because of the beaver damage. They ultimately rendered the trails completely underwater, and we've, they've been diverted and, but anyway, I'd like to see if we could work out something to preserve the multi-use trails back there. And then, the third thing is we would, I would need some information on this solar storage technology to understand what the ramifications are of it, like its safety characteristics and things like that. Lithium ion tends to have challenges, especially if the tech, if something goes wrong with the technology. I mean, it is the battery that's known for blowing up, and that's why you can't bring them and pack them in your luggage on airplanes and things like that. So, it would be really good if, if there's information available that you could share with the board. And, Adam, I, how would we get that kind of information validated? Because I don't think our, our engineering firm would be able to provide us the information.
You can bring in an expert.
We, we would have to search out another expert.
Yeah, because solar is, I mean, the, the safety of solar is pretty well-known now, right? So, you can get a lot of information on this, but this is the first I'm actually hearing of battery technology putting, put in solar fields. So, I, that would be my only other concern, is to understand what does a four-megawatt battery look like, and what are the ramifications of that thing if it had a problem, particularly with fire and safety and things like that.
Yeah, I should.
Yeah, I can tell you that we've been already working with the local fire department for, with Math, through Mass C E C. They have a train, they're having their first training program for battery storage in first responders, so we've been working with them already to kind of try to get that lined up, so we'll get them.
That's great.
That, that training already.
Because I know even just, like, Tesla automobiles are causing havoc, because they get in a car accident and the fire department can't touch the car.
Yeah.
Because.
Those questions are going to come up, what hazard mitigation, what if, what if there's a spill, what if there's, you know, leakage, how are you going to redirect it, how are you going to capture it, how are you going to dispose of it, all that stuff's got to, got to be covered.
And all the technology we're currently looking at has its own fire suppression system, you know, built into the containers that they come into. They're all, you know, which obviously, we can get you more detail on, but broad strokes.
They've made a lot of, I mean, remember when the Boeing 787s were catching on fire, they, you know, so they, the, the technology is getting better and the reason for the fires, but they've also enclosed it, and it's a really good system in, almost like a container off the back of a truck, and it just gets dropped as a container, and it has all of that in there automated. But we'll get you all the, all the information, but they have, they've made a lot of smart decisions. Something caught on fire in Hawaii a while ago, and it was just, like you said, those batteries out in the field, they didn't really, they just let it burn, but it's come light years from then, so.
All right. All right, those are all the pre-questions I had.
I think that's it for me.
Good.
Well, thank you very much for coming for pre-submission. Did you, I'm sorry.
No, I just would echo all of the comments that I heard tonight. Obviously, the impact to the neighborhood is going to be a big one, understanding that potential impact, and I would, I would echo all of the comments that were made by other members. I'd like to understand how it works with the pilot agreement, you know, the, the conservation restrictions, et cetera. You did mention that the prior submission, you thought that they were going for more wattage, and for whatever reason, they downsized, and I was just wondering if we have anything in our records as to why that occurred, because I seem to remember being at a Conservation Commission meeting, and the reason that it was decreased in size was because of impact to wetlands.
Yeah, there was some kind of a crossing or something.
There was a crossing that was prohibited.
Yeah, there is that stream that kind of runs through the middle. I think one, that was one reason, I think the other reason was also that it was expensive from the developers, this was before we bought it, from the developer's perspective, to build the necessary bridge that went across that, that stream and back up to kind of this back parcel. I think that was kind of one of the other reasons that I, in talking to the old developer that they said there was.
Yeah, so the only suggestion I would offer is to really take a look at those prior plans and perhaps consult with Conservation on concerns that they have before you go full bore, because I know that they had some major considerations regarding this parcel when the original size project was proposed.
I mean, I would say we can go back and pull out the notes, the, the meeting minutes and any other relevant submission material that we have that may give an indication as to why they downsized it. It may not.
I, I just, word of advice is you've come to this board for comments, and, and I think all of us are willing to certainly entertain it, and I don't think any of us are against it, and, and we've voiced what we, we would be looking for.
Right.
I would just suggest that perhaps you do the same with Conservation.
Yeah, I think with Conservation, it's a little more cut and dry, a little less subjective, because they're not giving a special permit, so I think if you, if you talk to the Conservation Administrator, they might be able to get a lot of that same information. I don't know how Conservation handles pre-submission.
I, I have gone to Conservation many times for potential projects, just to talk to them about, you know, their ideas regarding projects, the same type of thing that we talked about, concerns that they would have, specific, specific things that they would be looking at. And I know that there was significant concern from Conservation relative to that stream crossing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially, I mean, we learned a lot from the last one that came through about, I don't know whether it's cold water fishery, I don't know whether it's a fishery at all, but if it is, you know, there's a lot, a lot of runoff questions, heating of water runoff, stormwater stuff that also comes into play, so.
Well, we would definitely tackle all of that and reach out to the head of the Conservation Commission, and I remember one conversation was going above, I think the one was a bridge, the other one was going above ground, and there's certain setbacks for the poles, because then you just avoid it altogether. But, we're at least aware of that tricky part, and we just have to do what we're allowed to do, right? Or you have to abandon that and find other land.
Right, and that's just a suggestion, is to go and get their feedback.
Definitely.
Even, even the agent to talk about your prior experience, so that, so that before you go out and do a full engineering, you have some feedback, and I think you've received from, from this board.
Yeah.
And he was involved in here at the time of the previous filing, so he should have some institutional knowledge of it that.
Yeah.
Can at least point you in a direction.
What's his name?
Matt Morrow.
Okay.
And the only other thing I would say is if we do, so the SMART program, which is the new.
Yep.
Thing, I think started this week, if we get some good feedback there, and we would obviously bring something we think meets all of these concerns, and maybe even share, like, this trail thing, like, that's, I don't know where there's trails on this land, but we, I certainly, that might need a little more conversation, I would think. But there is sort of a time as of the essence in terms of the process, so I don't know if we could, by coming today, nip some things on, off, you know, off the bud, and then, and then when we come again, try to expedite it somehow so that we can put it in to the SMART program. Unatil is willing to come talk about, I mean, like, everybody's, you know, partnering around this, so I don't know what the typical timeline is, if it's a approved concept plus design, but do you have a sense of how long it would take if there's not a lot of consternation about it?
It, it all, honestly, depends on how.
Depends on what the public hearing.
How much feedback, yeah, and how quickly you guys are coming back with response, and it's a, it's theater.
The standard answer is 60 to 90 days.
Yeah.
For filing of a special permit, and that's, you know, clear sailing, no engineering issues, no major board issues, no major neighborhood opposition, no major feedback from other departments that says, you know, this is wrong, that's wrong, we're worried about this that you didn't address. And, and all of that can change and can be mitigated either by how quickly you respond to board and peer review comments and, and how thorough you, your responses are, and, you know, just how, how voluminous any sort of opposition or, or issue kind of grows to be. It's, it's hard to say, you know, I've seen things move through this board in, in 45 days pretty easily. I've seen other things that have gone on for, not, not in the last few years, but have been hanging around for years for a variety of different reasons that maybe aren't necessarily the board's fault, maybe aren't necessarily the applicant's fault, or, or maybe there's a little bit on both sides. So, it really, it's all, it's all process, and it's all how you approach it and how complete your submissions are.
I would, I would also add impact. So, if the way that you've set it up and structured it doesn't have any impact on the other aspects of the area, so it doesn't impact other people's properties, if it doesn't impact visuals, if it doesn't impact safety, if it doesn't impact the trails, all of these negative impact statements prevent people raising issues, right?
Right, yeah.
When, when you have vocal participants that are saying, hey, I used to have this beautiful view of woods in my backyard, now I'm going to see, you know, a four-megawatt solar system, I don't want it, that you've created an impact, and that is what causes the meetings to, to take a lot longer. But like, the way that this is situated today, you can't see it from anywhere.
Yeah, and I think that will be.
That has minimal impact, right? So, people say, well, I don't see it now, I'm not going to see it later, so those are the kinds of things that, that tend to go through a little bit easier.
Yeah.
I will mention, there were some residents on West Hunsen Road that were not happy.
Yes.
Over here?
And you can see it from there.
You can see it from there, huh?
Definitely, you absolutely can.
So, you can't see it from Chase, but you can see it from there.
And that, that brings up another question that I've got, is if you're going to go to four megawatts, then my understanding is the state maximum is six megawatts per facility? I'm not quite sure how they word it, but would this be a different type of?
No, because this would be seen from a state perspective as a totally separate project. So, the project there is an SREC one, it's got a particular point of common coupling with the interconnection, and this would be a second project completely.
So, would have a completely separate connection at Chase Road?
Yes.
And would it be at Chase Road, not at?
Yes, yeah.
So, it would be, it would be for more poles and a considerable amount more clearing of, of trees in front of the existing solar?
We'd have to ask Unatil. I don't think there should be a lot more clearing, but there would be new poles near, and for the battery to work, it needs to connect separately and on, on the AC side so it can take it from the grid and fill it from the solar. So, there would certainly be more poles on our, coming off the road onto our property there.
So, you looking to expand more towards the Chase roadside, or more towards the northern side?
If I pop up there, I bet I can just kind of show you. Yeah, so, more like.
So, these are your two setups, don't you?
Yeah, these are our two sites there. I mean, we're really hopeful that we're going to be able to find some land in here, and then this kind of piece, this stream kind of runs through like this from.
Right, yeah.
And we're hoping, as are the Hericks, hoping that we can put solar in right kind of in this little triangle here.
Mr. Chair, we have a comment in the audience, I think that they can't hear.
See where you're pointing at? What's that? Whenever you see what you're pointing at.
Sure. Yeah, so, so we're really hopeful we're going to be able to find some solar in here, and then the Hericks have this, this piece here, and we're kind of hoping to get this part, because there's a stream that runs kind of right down here, I'm guessing this is going to be wetlands. And then, initially, what we were talking about on this site is up in this kind of corner here is where we have that other piece that was permitted in the special permit but never got built.
Because the, there's actually the stream that runs down through.
Yeah, that's that stream.
As well, as well as the beaver dam up this area.
Yeah.
Prevents the water from running down this way, so there's actually, dries up from time to time, but runs. time to time, that runs this way through it as well.
Yeah.
And this whole area was originally covered in solar according to the plan.
Right, right, yeah, and there's like a little piece that sits up in here, that I think was, did get permitted with that initial permit, and that's kind of one of the pieces we're looking at doing also.
Correct, but then nothing had been built, so there was a question, I believe, of 200-foot setbacks, and whether or not there was appropriate area there to provide the appropriate setbacks and not impact the houses in here.
Right.
Who all overlooked this and can see right across into the field today.
Mm-hmm. Can you give us a name?
Oh, I'm sorry. John Whalen, 526 West Townsend Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just, I wanted to see where the...
Yeah, yeah. It's hard to say, man.
Thank you. So that gives you a pretty good idea, I think, of what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I do have a question, so you've got four megawatts of generating power that you're adding, correct?
In engineering theory, that's ideal.
Okay, right.
And it might end up being three, right?
Sure.
It depends what fits.
What does the battery backup hold?
Four megawatt hours.
Four megawatts, so are we, how does that work? Because they don't, there's no overlap, right? It's just considered a four-megawatt system?
Yes, because...
It's not considered an eight-megawatt system?
No, no. It's a separate, so what happens is, and again, it's technical and it's Unitil, Unitil blocks the amount of power that can enter the grid at, they're going to block it at 3.1 AC.
Okay.
So the numbers we're giving you are DC, but really, it's, from a utility perspective, it's all measured in AC. And then you could put more DC behind AC in your engineering design, I mean, that's what you do. So anyway, they are limiting it to 3.1 AC. The AC total size would be 3.1 and the battery, but because it's limited, it's, it really, the grid only sees the 3.1.
3.1, okay.
So really, what it does is it extends the duration that you can deliver onto the grid, right?
It's...
So when you're capped during the day, you can be storing it in storage, and then as the sun fades, you can continue delivering at the same 3.1 rate for a longer period of time.
Yeah, because in the current designs, you pump everything into the grid instantly, whether the grid needs it or doesn't. So you get the same power. Scenario A with no battery and scenario B with a battery is identical in terms of the production. It's just scenario B takes your 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it, instead of jamming it into the grid that doesn't need it, it puts it in the battery, and then, so it flattens.
It levels it all out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you had a big enough, you could do baseline power, you could do 24/7 if you wanted to, right? Which, you know, that's not economic and not needed, but the peak shaving, and again, on this particular feeder, there's so much energy that it runs backwards and back through the substation and then out into other stuff. And that's not the way, that's not ideal, right? Because usually, power goes from the substation to the users, right? So this is another thing that is going to be tested and smoothed and make it more efficient and effective.
I'd like to thank you again for coming in for the pre-submission.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot.
Chair?
Really not a public hearing, but sure, step up, please.
Again, it was John Whalen, 526 West Townsend Road. Thank you, folks, for actually looking into this and asking the critical questions. It was nice to hear some of the clear questions that I wanted to ask being asked up here by the members of this board, so thank you very much. There were some stuff that was said, there was some stuff that was sort of alluded to, and I would hope that when this particular group comes back, they would actually have the answers we really would be looking for. Things like knowing about the fact that there are multi-use trails on the property that people do use, and maybe even knowing where they are. The question about the pilot agreement was a good one as well. The other question I would ask this board to consider is, are the existing projects that this particular company has in the town of Lunenburg currently in accordance with the way the bylaws are written and the intent of those bylaws? Because I believe if you look at West Street, you would think that maybe they should be doing some additional buffering on West Street for those neighbors who have solar panels in their backyards with very little, if no buffer, between their house and those panels. Yes, you can actually see it from the houses on West Townsend Road. If you've noticed on the map, that regularly shaped parcel, they call it 651 Chase Road, they tie into the grid on 651 Chase Road, but only the portion at the bottom of the hill and up the hill halfway is considered commercial property. Above that was considered residential and outline. So we have a situation where if they want to go into that section up above, things should be a little bit more sensitive to what's going on up above. And again, that parcel to the north, or that section of the parcel to the north, there was a bridge to cross the stream, there was the wetlands themselves, which according to their original plan, they ignored the wetlands. So that's a big piece of it. I think a lot of that section to the upper north, northeast corner, maybe there's a small piece of land there, but I'm hoping they don't go in there, because again, that's right where the trails go through. That's actually the confluence of the trails from down below, from towards the Subaru dealer, that come up there just to that south edge of that pond where the Beaver Dams are, and that's kind of a key confluence of all the trails in the area right there. So that would be where they're talking about putting this, if they're going to use it that upper corner. Please keep in mind, you know, there were trees planted in places, but trees have died, and trees are not in the healthiest condition. Thankfully, oh, they were not planted in a year like this year, where everything would grow, because it's nice and wet all summer long. It was planted in a dry year, and they died, or a bunch of them didn't do very well. So again, buffering is a big issue with us. Considering the topography of the land, everything slopes downhill there, so everything, everyone in those houses on the north side, or the northwest there, towards West Townsend Road, are overlooking this, and land slopes down. So anything you do down there, we see. And that was one of the things that was also thought of in the bylaws, is we could be closer, it could be further away, but as long as we can't see it, that's what we wanted. Thankfully, the lot that they're actually showing here is that side that's closer to Chase Road and not any closer to West Townsend Road. That stuff up in the West Townsend Road, just south of the houses there, is kind of a sensitive spot. When I actually start up my DJI drone in my backyard, it tells me that I'm taking off within a power plant. And I was told, no, this is not industrial use. Yes, it is. It's industrial use, and when I take off with my drone in my own backyard, it tells me I'm in a power plant. And I don't appreciate that. And I intentionally now don't fly that direction because of the solar field, and if they continue to expand it out, then I won't be able to fly that direction at all. There's, the town has a couple of spots that might actually be ideal for this new technology. We have the town dump, to my knowledge, was never actually, it's a perfect brown field where people would expect solar to be installed, and we've never had solar installed there. I don't know why that wouldn't be a question this board should ask these folks, is why don't we inquire about that location? Or how about the other location on the Water District? Because the Water District's largest expense was electricity. And they were curious about what they could do, and they wanted one of the solar plans to be done down there. It would be great if it was done down there and not in folks' backyards. And I asked previously about the capacity on the grid. Last time, I was told, oh, there's no problem with capacity on the grid. Now there's problems with capacity on the grid, isn't there? You know, I was told there would be no problem with capacity on the grid. There was no problem with capacity for them. However, all the other people who then wanted to get on, the residents of this town who wanted to use solar on their own house for net metering, were not able to because of the large amount of upgrades now necessary on the grid. So people in this town were not allowed to use solar and have solar hookups using net metering because of that. I'm hoping that that's being addressed here. It honestly sounds like it's not being addressed here, and that this battery is a way around that issue that has been caused, as opposed to dealing with the underlying problem now with the grid and doing the necessary upgrades on the grid. So people have thrown around a quarter of a million dollar upgrade necessary on the grid, and my question is, are they planning to do that, or is this simply a Band-Aid? To use the new funding for this new SMART program, to start this new battery idea, and to install more solar in a piece of property they already own, where it really doesn't belong?
As far as I know, the upgrade was done, and there is no restriction on solar.
I just want you guys to be thinking about all these things, because I am.
Yeah, it is something that we do ask now, it is something we ensure that it will have no impact to homeowners being able to put their own solar in on their own roofs if they want to.
Good, I appreciate that, because that was one of the things that we had always stated in all of our meetings back then, was we were not against people having solar, we're not against Walmart having solar on their facility down the street. But when you start tearing down trees and clearcutting to put in solar in someone's backyard, we have an issue. That's, you know, and we should be looking out for each other here. We usually do in this town, so I would hope that people would have our backs on this I am a little scared by lithium batteries. I don't even put my own lithium batteries for remote control projects and toys in places where I don't expect them to go up, and I keep them in fire-safe boxes, and I keep them under bags of sand. So I am a little horrified to hear that it's a LiPo battery they're looking at putting in there. And I also am not pleased with the fact they're trying to play games and shuffle around and say that it's not really over six megawatts, when you've got two pieces of, one piece of property, contiguous piece of property, you're putting stuff, A, up in residential zone, as far away from Chase Road as you can get, and now you're saying you're going to have two separate facilities that are right next to each other on the same piece of property, but they're two separate projects, so you get around the state limitation of having a six-megawatt as the max size. Again, I don't think that's right. So, yeah, I think they've got their work cut out for them, and, you know, from what I saw of the picture, and it's being the lot that's more down on the commercial side, I'd be more in favor of that than that other lot up there with the wetlands that's close to neighboring houses. But I'd like you folks to keep asking the right questions, because I think there's lots of other ways that we can do solar in this town that would be better and more beneficial to the town than tearing down trees and forested areas in town that people currently use. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that did sound like testimony, and, but this is not a public hearing, but I did allow him, no, not at all. I was glad you spoke, so that you folks can get a better understanding of one a butter, and I believe you're going to have to notify a butter's within a butter's to 300 feet, which in Lunenburg is going to be 35, and that also goes into Townsend, I don't know if they're going to be required to be, so that's one out of 35. And this video will be available on Lunenburg Public Access on YouTube, so you can review.
Okay. So one thing I did notice in the sharing of statements that you may want to take into consideration is, the current residents that see the existing solar field are not happy with the buffering that was done and as it's demised over time. So something you may want to consider is enhancing that buffering as part of any other additional project that you are going to propose, and that may help with the residents in the general area.
Yeah, definitely, there's an opportunity there.
Yeah.
All right, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Sounds good.
All right, now we get to talk about pot. Recreational marijuana, public discussion of craft cultivator.
Yeah, okay. So how much of my spiel do you want me to give?
The, give the 10-minute version, no more than that.
No, no more than 10 minutes, okay.
Because you could go on for 30 minutes, I'm sure.
I could. So tonight, we're talking about the proposal for regulations for, what's wrong with my brain? Non-medical adult-use marijuana businesses, specifically craft cultivators. Craft cultivators are a subset of cultivators, but they have some distinct characteristics. They are a corporation or an LLC that is wholly comprised of Massachusetts residents. They have the ability to cultivate marijuana for non-medical adult use, and to process that marijuana into other products for non-medical adult use. So this is sort of a combination of marijuana processing establishments and marijuana cultivators under one singular license, provided that they are wholly Massachusetts residents. They are not able to sell direct to consumer, but they are allowed to sell to other marijuana establishments and purchase from other marijuana establishments. But the general intent, and I'm hoping I'm not mixing this up, is to have sort of a one-stop shop of products between the flour and any other extractions or products that come from that, that is based wholly within Massachusetts and is owned by only those people. And this, I believe, is part of the Cannabis Control Commission's attempt to equalize the economic playing field between large national and multinational corporations and large local corporations, because I don't think that you can get into this business right now if you're, you know, a onesie-twosie mom-and-pop sort of thing, just based on the economics of licensing. Now, that ultimately may change, and it may become less expensive, but right now, there's a fair amount of cost involved. So, and again, this is, we're not necessarily here debating whether marijuana should be in the town of Lunenburg for non-medical use. We're looking at, the planning board has looked at, and will need to have a discussion with the Board of Selectmen regarding the ballot initiative, but the board wants to allow residents to choose between prohibition and regulation. Prohibition is a two-step process, where there's a bylaw that needs to be adopted, and a ballot initiative that would affirm the bylaw. And regulation is just a matter of adopting bylaws that would incorporate reasonable regulations that denote time, place, and manner of non-medical marijuana businesses. All the licensing is done through the Cannabis Control Commission, they're sort of the first step, they handle all of the background checks, the nuts and bolts of operation, we can mirror some of those, we can be more strict in some ways, but really, we're looking at time, place, and manner. Where is it? How is it? What does it look like? And those sorts of things.
So, may we start?
Yes.
So what are we looking at? For, if you're a craft cultivator...
Yep.
You need a facility for growing?
Mm-hmm.
For...
Processing.
Processing and for selling.
No.
Not for selling.
You are not retail as a crop.
But you may...
So if you look at...
You can only deal with other dealers.
This lot... You can transport to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers.
Okay.
So in theory, someone could have a craft marijuana cultivator cooperative license. They could also hold a retail license, and they could sell to consumer through their retail license. Or they could, they could be like Trudy's Treats, and they could grow and produce these products, and they could end up selling them through a variety of different supermarkets or retail marijuana establishments.
But theoretically, it could be like a farm-to-table type of thing.
Theoretically, but you would also need the retail license to be able to do that.
Sure.
Essentially, it's a...
No, I'm just trying to think about, what would they be, what might they need to get their job done, right?
If, for the craft marijuana cooperative license itself, if that's the only license that they have, they need facilities to cultivate and facilities to process.
Okay.
Now, the processing facilities could be any variety of thing. Now, people can process the flowers into tinctures, they can flower into waxes, they can create oils, they can create edible goods, they could create... can create edible goods. They could create only one of those things. They could create all of those things. They could create things I haven't even thought of yet or haven't even heard of yet.
Yeah. So I haven't walked one of these facilities. Can anybody give me some indication of what kind of, you know, what is the, what is the footprint of this look like? What is the?
I think it depends on each operation. I've never been in a processing facility. I have toured a medical cultivation facility. And it's an old factory. The one I toured was an old factory. The, this license mirrors the cultivation license in that they cannot cultivate more than 100,000 square feet of canopy. So I'm not a farmer. I don't even try to play one on TV. I have a plant in my office that's still alive. I don't know how. So I'm probably not the best person to estimate this, but 100,000 square feet of canopy probably translates to 150 to 175,000 square feet of building with all the pertinent equipment, passageways, storage, all of that kind of stuff. As far as processing, you know, I mean, I guess it could be anywhere from small to really big.
But again, you're talking about, you're talking about shipping. So you're going to need, right? Shipping, you're going to need some.
You're going to need to transport.
Transport, yeah.
But you're also transporting probably smaller quantities in some ways because it's all local.
Maybe.
You're not, you know, you're, you're not packing up a boxcar and, and putting it on the rails to go to a break of bulk point somewhere else where you're distributing that prop, that product. You're probably talking a box truck or a Sprinter van of some.
But someone, also someone could be coming in with any, any, any size or shape of truck. But yeah, I mean, maybe you've got in the Conno line. Yeah, okay.
Correct.
All right.
But you also have to think about efficiency. It doesn't make sense to, to tote around an 18 wheeler or even a massive box truck if all of the products you're selling are, you know, yea big. You know, we're, we're not.
My point is the comings and goings.
Correct. There's traffic.
Right. There's traffic. Okay.
But.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please. No, please.
I was just speaking to your, what does this look like?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that because it's a co-op, that it's going to be comprised of lots of little individual people contributing or subgroups contributing to various aspects of the overall craft. So there may be some growers in the co-op. There may be some packagers in the co-op. There may be some people that transform the product into something else in the co-op. And the co-op members can come and go as, as they see fit, right? It's not like it's one company that's coming and doing something. It's a co-op, right?
Is it? Is this a hybrid term?
You know, I, I think the, I'm sorry.
Well, reading this, I mean, it's organized as a cooperative. So it's organized as a limited liability company, limited liability partnership, or a cooperative corporation. So the, while the individuals may change, the company itself will remain because it's formed under law.
Participants can come and go.
Right.
So you could be a packager and you say, hey, I want to join your co-op and they sign you up and now you're a member of the co-op. Now you get some square footage in the facility and you can start packaging stuff and, and interact with the other co-op members. That's my understanding of it. And that's why.
Well, they have to be licensed to perform those operations.
It's the LLC that's licensed.
No, but it's.
No, every individual employee needs to be licensed.
Every individual component. It has to be licensed to cultivate, manufacture, process, package, and brand marijuana. So those are separate entities.
So the co-op is not licensed? Does the individuals are licensed?
The uses are licensed, I believe.
No, the co, the, the, all of those items are under that single license for craft marijuana cooperative. Now, all of the members of the corporation need to be vetted and approved and background checked by the Cannabis Control Commission. I honestly believe cooperative is probably a misnomer in this. I don't think this is like the cooperative supermarket that I belonged to when I was in college where you had to go and work 15 hours a week to get the, the discount. I think it's, it's, the intent is that it's an organization of Massachusetts residents who have formed a corporation for the purposes of performing these functions as part of their business plan. And I think the intent is that they're allowing this entity to have a little bit more latitude because they're giving preference to ownership based within Massachusetts to get back to their sort of equity thing. And I think this is probably sort of the first step that has been borne out a little bit further through some of the social justice programs they've rolled out where they've had empowerment communities that have been more negatively impacted by the war on drugs and, and the incarceration rates for nonviolent drug offenses are higher. Those folks were included in the first set of licenses that were for experienced marijuana businesses only. The Cannabis Control Commission took a pointed approach to looking to try and use this opportunity to give the communities that were more negatively impacted by this some potential opportunity to be less impacted. What, you know, and I, you know, not, there's obviously a lot of nuance and, and politics to that thought process, but I, I think this is an intent to keep opportunity high for locally based corporations. I think a lot of what you see coming forth, both in the medical sphere and somewhat in the, the non-medical sphere, are people who have corporate links to Washington State and Colorado and, and to companies that are openly traded on the Canadian Stock Exchange. And I think that this gets away from those type of things and goes a little more grassroots.
Creates some opportunities.
Correct. But I think it's more akin to, you know, cultivation and processing in the, the standard sense of it and under the other, the other items that they.
So back to a zoning question, the zoning of this. What are the needs? And to steal a term from Ken, what are the impacts? What are the potential impacts? And what are the needs for a company like this or a co-op, if you will, from their perspective?
You know, I guess we're, we're speculating wholly.
That's what I'm trying to get to, though.
I would think that they, they need a fair amount of space to cultivate, depending on the size of their, their cultivation license. They need a space to be able to process. Now, again, I, I don't know what a processing space would look like. I, when, when I did tour the medical cultivation facility, they had their new, it was some sort of extraction machine that used a CO2-based solution to create oils from the flowers. And honestly, it was probably about half the size of the stage. But I, you know, I don't know how much that produces, how many you'd need to run to make a, you know, a, a go at it. I don't know how much after processing there is to that. I mean, they just had it sort of half set up. It wasn't operating yet. They were talking about it was going to take them another month to get it going. If you're talking about getting into a, you know, a food-based consumption, you're, you know, you're getting into a kitchen. You're getting into multiple ovens or other kitchen facilities. You're getting into packaging. So you, you know, you're talking about a, probably a, a small, light processing sized facility.
So in, in any case, you've got a, you've got a facility that's large enough for production that's similar to just a ca, a regular cultivator.
I would expect.
Or it could be distributed too, right? So you could have up to six locations. I mean.
Yeah, it could, it could be.
What I'm reading here is, is implying what I'm saying is, is the way that it, it works. So you could have a, a farmer in town that has existing property that they're farming on and wants to designate a small area of their property to, to grow cannabis. They can join a co-op so that they can do that because then they would be licensed to grow it on their property under the license of the co-op without having to go get a license of their own. And you can have up to six or seven, I forgot.
So they, yeah, they would, they would be a member of the LLP or the, or the co-op. Correct. So you could have disparate locations. Yes.
So you could have satellite locations for a co-op. It's not one place. That, that was my question. Because if you look at the cultivator, and now I understand your, your initial question, if you look at the cultivator abilities, they can cultivate, obtain, manufacture, process, package, and brand marijuana and/or marijuana products and transport to marijuana establishments. But if you then look at the marijuana manufacturer, they obtain, manufacture, process, and package. So there's overlap there.
Correct.
So I'm trying to understand, in, in the event that a cultivator co-op came forward, is this board then obligated to grant the manufacturing process as well?
That, and that would be dependent on the zoning. I would expect if, if you're, you would be licensing them as a, as a co-op would be my understanding. So if they're part of the co-op and, oh, but.
But you're not, though.
No, I see what you're saying.
Because that's not manufacture. Because, because there's too much overlap in that definition. Because a cultivation facility may be very different than a manufacturing facility.
Correct.
So my question is, if someone comes before this board for cultivator license, by default, have we then granted all of the facets of, as defined under the law, for a cultivator license?
But I, I think the difference is, and I, I think if you read more into it, the, the cultivator's processing is not changing the state of the product.
That's not what this says, though. That's why I'm trying to understand.
Again, this is a simplified.
Right. So I think we have to understand that.
If you look further into the regs, the, the processing of a cultivator is, it would be like, you know, you go and pick wheat or blueberries and you're processing them from, to, to move to sale. You're, you're trimming the, the plant itself. You're processing the, the plant in a way that you can transport it. Or if they're packaging and selling, you have to prepare that for packaging and selling through a process.
I think we have to understand that differentiation.
So in an effort to kind of focus the conversation here, I don't see, personally, I don't see any difference between this and what we've already discussed previously with cultivation and talking about putting it in an industrial area. I don't see anything here that tells me this should go in any other area of town.
Well, but maybe. If it is in fact a co-op, as Ken suggests, then growers may be growing at up to six different locations.
And.
But you can only.
And bringing it there.
Yeah. So, so the reason I think they're distinguished is, is because we could, we could restrict cultivator to, or we had already said we would restrict someone cultivator to industrial zone. Now we have the opportunity of craft cultivator. We could set a size limit on someone that would participate in a co-op. It'd be a much smaller scale or something to say if you wanted to participate in a co-op, then this is a different regulation that you'd have to abide by to participate in the co-op. And I think that's why we would want to distinguish the two. We could also say, treat them the same. If you want to be a, a craft cultivator and participate in a co-op, you still have to have industrial property. We could do that. But this gives us the opportunity that we could change the, the regulation around that depending upon what the people in town want.
Yeah. I mean, this one's, this one more thoroughly provides opportunities to local, smaller businesses as opposed to the other ones. I mean, I would be more in favor of, of something like this.
And, and to a certain extent, I agree with that statement. The challenge I see with it is we're not the licensing authority. And so we're going to deal with whatever the CCC sends our way. And if they license whoever to join the co-op, we have no say in that.
Would they, would they check each individual member who joins the co-op? Because they'd be swi, I mean, you could, you could conceivably switch that. You could buy out.
Regardless, we're not the licensing authority.
We're not the licensing authority.
Well, we can put the restriction on, on where the co-op can be utilized.
Correct. And in licensing, so the licensing process, and I neglected to discuss this at my outset because you guys told me I only had a little bit, but the.
You only use three minutes.
Someone who wants to open a marijuana establishment needs to have a community meeting where they disclose what licenses they're pursuing, where they want to do it, what the extent of their establishment and operation are. Then they need to sign a host community agreement with the Board of Selectmen. Then they're allowed to finalize their application packet to the, to the Cannabis Control Commission. Upon the finalization of that application, Cannabis Control Commission looks through it, does background checks, and sends the town a letter that says, we've received this application for this use at this location. Can you permit that? And so if, say, somebody applies for a craft marijuana cultivator of 50,000 square feet on Mass Ave, and we've said that, you know, craft marijuana cultivators outside of the industrial zone can't be greater than 5,000 square feet of canopy. We would send a letter back that says, no, we can't permit that. And that application would die on the vine.
But, but doesn't this tie in with what, what the woman from, from the audience had to say a couple of sessions ago about a midsize.
Mm-hmm. Very much so.
Farmer wanting to get into business. She can go, she can create, let's just say it's, you know, one acre, less than an acre, you know? And then she can become a member of the co-op and operate under that license as a small grower.
Correct.
So that's something that, maybe I'm getting there wrong, but I think we need to get clarification on that.
That is my understanding of the, of the regulation as well.
Correct. But so this is where that ties in.
My understanding is that person would need to be licensed.
Through the co-op.
No.
No, through the commission.
I don't believe so.
I don't, I don't think so. Individual members, individual employees of these businesses need to be licensed through the Cannabis Control Commission and have full background checks.
Only one craft marijuana cultivator operative, operative license per business entity.
So if the co-op has formed a business entity.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, if you go and work at one of these stores selling behind the counter, you need to have a license from the Cannabis Control Commission.
Obviously, because that's a retail use.
Correct. But if the craft marijuana cultivator is altering their cooperative by changing the locations that they're operating out of. So let's say that they open, they go in to get their license and they have a cultivator who's in Lancaster. And that person says, you know what? This isn't so much for me. And they're going to come and switch to someone who's in Lunenburg. That's a change to their license. So they need to report that to the Cannabis Control Commission. And my understanding is they would follow that same zoning process where they would then say, can you license this change under this existing license?
Okay. So back to the original question. So our, our audience member, she would have to have a cultivator's license of her own?
No.
No.
She, she would be under, she would need to be licensed as an employee or.
Oh, of the, of the.
Or a member of the co-op.
Member of the co-op.
And because the cooperative is adding a new location.
Yes.
They would need to alter their license with the Control Commission.
Understood.
Which would require local contact because they're now licensing.
Yeah.
A facility that's within this community and they need to know whether zoning wise.
For each co-op that they add on, they have to update their license.
Correct. That would be, that's, that's the way that I've understood it.
That makes sense.
I will clarify that, but that's the way that.
But it still does open the door for opportunities for smaller.
Exactly.
For smaller growers.
Up to three per, per co-op.
Correct.
It looks like there's no limit.
No, I'm sorry. I have, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Up to three cultivation licenses.
I'm looking at a different handout from the Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay.
And it says that members of a craft marijuana cooperative may not have a controlling interest in any other marijuana establishment.
Correct.
So they'd have to partner with a retailer, whatever. A craft marijuana cooperative is not limited to a particular number of cultivation locations, but is limited to a total canopy of 100,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So they could have 100,000 square foot.
So they have up to 100,000?
Or they could have 1,100 square foot. And, and they're also limited to three locations for activities authorized for marijuana product manufacturers.
Correct.
Okay. So three manufacturing locations.
So if you're processing or doing something to it. But, so, so the idea that, that I understood this is, this is to allow the, the small farmer to participate in this new industry under a limited liability corporation as a craft cultivator. So if you have, you know, 100 square feet on your property that you want to allocate to this purpose, you can join one of these LLCs and start to grow. And I guess they're already taking off in Western Maine.
So this becomes more complicated because we have to look at setbacks. We have to look at. There's two more things that I didn't get to, to finish here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, one member of the craft marijuana cooperative must have filed a Schedule F tax form, which is the farming within the last five years. And the craft marijuana cooperative must oper, they, they spelled operative, but operate according to the seven cooperative principles published by the International Cooperative Alliance in 1995.
by the International Cooperative Alliance in 1995."
Yeah.
So their business model is defined in that fashion.
So it is a pure co-op.
It is a pure co-op.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Just real quick, I just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Bernie was saying is, oh, I'm sorry, Kim Cole, 563 Mass Ave. So with the respect with the whole licensing thing that they were talking about, there is something here that I have in the Cannabis Control Commission regulations that there's a difference between like the license and then there is registration of marijuana establishment agents.
Correct.
So all the employee, it says, "All of its board members, directors, employees, executive managers, and volunteers who are associated with the marijuana establishment." Each of those gets a registration card that they must carry with them at all times. So it's not like a, under one, I mean, yes, you have to have the license obviously to operate the establishment or the co-op, but each individual person, so when you're talking about people coming in and out of the co-op, each person will be vetted by the Cannabis Control Commission and get a registration card.
Right, but this goes back to the original discussion. I was like, what does this look like? Does it look like a 100,000 square foot facility? No, no. It looks like a whole bunch of little teeny pieces of property and individuals that are participating just for their part of the craft.
Right.
Maybe someone has figured out how to splice a couple of things together and come up with something that's new and really cool. And they want to make it available, so they join this co-op and then they can grow it and sell it.
Brings up a whole bunch.
But all those people will also be vetted through. So it's not just anybody that can.
But we have, we have to put the bylaws in place that say, yes, you can do it because you have 200 feet setback from your field, on your field and all such. We have to come up with those regulations?
If you choose to do that.
Yes. We have to decide whether we want just one co-op or multiple co-ops, right? Is that true? Whether we'll allow more than one?
The only license that you can limit is retail.
Oh, okay. So it could be as many as.
So if you permit, or if you set regulations for all the other licenses and that's what goes on the books, you can't limit it to how many you have.
Okay.
But we can limit, we can limit the location.
Correct.
Restrictions.
And you can, you can limit distance between or
Correct.
that kind of stuff.
Can limit time, place, and manner.
I have one other concern. My only other concern is, you know, like you said, like the location can be wherever. I mean, you guys can zone it, put it in certain zones. But there is a, I don't know if it's a co-op, it's called Farmbug. They're kind of activists for this. And they are trying to move, and I don't know if it went through, I didn't see anywhere where it actually went through, but they are trying to change things so that the security is assessed on a case-by-case basis on these properties. So like basically, you know, the security on, which we've gone through a lot of the different facilities, there's a lot of security in these facilities. And this Farmbug is trying to say that the security is going to be on a case-by-case basis instead of having the security that normal marijuana establishments have. So to me, that's a concern and I don't know if the Cannabis Control Commission chooses to change if they haven't already the security requirements for the co-ops. But if they do, if they do decide to change it or if they have changed it, you know, that's definitely a concern because they're not abiding by, you know, the regular, you know, and I know it's kind of cost prohibitive to some people, but there, I don't know if they've changed it, if we can do regulations of certain things that we can keep or not. I don't know. I mean, Town Council's not here, so.
May I ask a question? Do you know if they're talking about security? Because I would imagine they're not carrying much cash here. So is it, is it facility?
Well, like facility, you know.
Security or transport security or do you know?
I think it's mostly facility security. So like if you have a farmer who's, does a plot of land to grow and that's outside cultivation, are we doing that? I don't know.
Well, that's true.
So, or do they have it in a greenhouse or do they, you know, and you're not supposed to be able to see it from the road and you're supposed to have fencing and all of this stuff? And if you're just a farmer who wants to grow a small piece of it, what is going to be the security on that? If it does go by a case-by-case basis, you guys should come up with the regulations as to what the minimum security should be on something of that nature versus, you know, but with the Cannabis Control Commission right now with security on regular cultivators and everything, you know, if that stands.
And so you're saying that Farmbug is just basically lobbying?
Yes.
Okay.
To, to, they, they.
From minimums or?
No, they're lobbying to say that it's assessed on a case-by-case basis instead of holding them to the same as the cultivator and manufacturers, processors have to do now.
It may be that way up here as well. I mean, because we may want to judge, I'm not saying that, but I mean, we may want to judge each one on a case-by-case basis as well.
So I'm not sure legally how that would play out. Town Council would probably know that, whether, what the Cannabis Control Commission and what you guys have the regulation to do the bylaws. But when I read that, I was kind of a little bit worried. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the Cannabis Control Regulation requirements for small growing facilities?
All of their security is pretty standardized. They don't look at it by facility size. There's, and again, I don't have it off the top of my head. It's in the regulations, which you all should have a copy of, but if I recall correctly, there was two independent security systems. There's fencing requirements, there's lock requirements, there's all that kind of stuff.
And were we permitted to create more stringent security measure requirements or lower them? I wouldn't imagine.
You're not allowed to make them less than. Where it's a CMR, I'm not sure if you're allowed to alter them. I can check with Town Council. They're fairly stringent and if I recall correctly, we had talked about this before and what we had said previously was that the police and fire chief would be required to sign off with final approval by the planning board. And, you know, that's how our medical reads currently. And perhaps I'm misremembering, but I thought that that was what the board wanted to carry on through the adult use, non-medical stuff. And that would mean matching the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations and having local authorities sign off and approve it. And then the board being the final say of, yeah, that works.
Okay, so we should have something in there that says that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Final say.
And that was, that was sort of the.
We can beef it up if the chief says, "I would put, you know, this, that."
Or we have a concern about this particular plot because of these reasons and we think that this is a security concern. We'd like you to address this in some way and require them to do so.
And if I could just ask that I get a copy of those?
Yeah, I'll get you a copy of those. I thought, I thought it was included, but.
So where to go now on this discussion? Do you want to talk about? Should we get some more information back from you and hit this again?
Yeah.
Next time? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the transporter license is something that we're going to have to worry too much about.
Okay.
Because really that's, most of those aren't, they're not going to be storing product wherever they happen to locate. They're going to be moving from wherever they're located and going facility to facility.
Okay.
And I would expect, maybe this is poor on my part, but I expect that most of the transporters are not going to be only transporting licenses. So it'll be a secondary license on top of somebody who's doing some other license or combination of licenses.
Doesn't it sound like the transport is allowed under the craft cultivator?
It is. You're allowed to get a transport-only license.
Separate from that.
Separate from everything. So what we've talked about is that the non-medical adult-use marijuana licensing process is an à la carte process as opposed to when medical marijuana was originally approved in 2012, it was a vertical license. You did everything from soup to nuts. You had to cultivate it, you had to process it, you had to retail it. You were on the hook for all of it. So you didn't really need to transport it. And if you did, you were transporting it from your facility to your facility. Now with the non-medical adult-use stuff, you can go in and get a retail license and a transporter's license, or you can get a cultivation license and a retail license. Or you can get a retail license and a processing license or a cultivation and processing. You sort of choose which licenses you want to get and they operate under that umbrella. I think what we're seeing right now is that most of the retail facilities that are opening are going to be holding cultivation and processing licenses because the majority of them currently are medical marijuana establishments that exist and have that vertical license. So they have the capacity to do all of those things. The first of the year will be the time when licensing opens to all comers. And I think at that point, we're going to see more specialization. People who just want to do retail and go and buy their products from a variety of people. People who only want to process, people who only want to cultivate, people who want to do some combination of each of those. So, you know, I think the Wild West will sort of start to shake all that out after, after the first of the year.
Okay.
I do think we have to have a discussion about the potential of these satellite sites. I did have an opportunity to review all the discussions by this board prior to this meeting. And there was talk, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there was talk about requiring the grow facilities to be indoors. This, I think potentially, if this board is willing to entertain it, opens that up if we allow for this co-op cultivator. So I think we do have to talk about that at some point about whether or not we're willing to entertain outdoor grow sites and what that would look like.
I'm not sure we've actually gotten any definitive explanation of anything to do with outdoor growing.
Well, my understanding was the board felt that after the discussions from last winter, that outdoor should be off the table and that indoor should be the way to go based on
It's hard to secure outdoor.
Between security and olfactory and other impacts to abutting properties, the board was supportive of indoor only.
Even a craft cultivator would likely have a small greenhouse.
Okay, but I think we have to talk about that.
Yeah.
I think we have to, we have to have more of a discussion.
Definitely needs to go on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah.
About specifically, and the other question I have for the board is, there was a couple of different discussions about how to approach this. Whether you do an all-out prohibition article and it's sort of an all-or-nothing approach? Or whether you do the individual questions of retail versus cultivator versus manufacturing? And I'm wondering if you've reached any consensus on that or what the thought is for the annual town meeting? What, what are you going to do an all-or-nothing approach? That if the, if the community says, you know, no, we're going to prohibit it, but the concern that I would have with that approach is if the community doesn't pass that, then what? Then everything's open?
My understanding is each use was going to be voted on.
Okay, so that's the approach that we're going to take?
Prohibition on each use. Do you want to probably disuse this use, this use?
Okay, so it would be five individual questions.
Correct. So the town could say, "Hey, we want no retail allowed in town, but we want to participate in the craft co-op."
Okay.
So that could certainly.
I just want to understand the mindset that we're going forward with.
For each use, we still have to have the full regulation.
Right, right. Because if it's not prohibited, then we have to have the regulation.
Second vote to say, "Okay, so we didn't prohibit it. So here's the regulation that we're proposing."
Okay.
So to piggyback on that through the chair, this board can't put anything on a ballot.
Right.
Has to go through the Board of Selectmen. So in discussing it with the town manager, I think that it's important that this board sooner rather than later have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen to sort of broach this subject and have a discussion about what that might look like and sort of start that conversation so that there isn't a shock.
Yep.
If at some point that is something they choose to not do. I don't have any inclination that they're opposed to putting it on the ballot, but rather than make assumptions, if everybody is available, I think that they have a workshop coming up on December 11th. And I think that if we could start that conversation before the new year, it will make everything move a little bit easier in so much as anything can move easy in local government.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but we're required by the state to put it on the ballot, aren't we?
If you wish to prohibit it.
Okay, so if for any, any five of the groups, the town at town meeting decides to prohibit, then we would be required to have a ballot initiative to coincide with that with very much the same wording?
Yes, it has to have not very much the same.
Exactly the same.
Right. But again, the selectmen need to put it on the ballot. So having that conversation with them, and they've heard me say it plenty of times, I know that some of them, if not all of them, watch these meetings. So they're aware that the board would like to do this, but having that interaction would probably be in our best interest.
Definitely. Because there may be some conflict in the way that they want to handle it versus the way we want to handle it. So we should iron that out before we get there.
Okay. I just, from a timeline perspective, what is the timeline for the selectmen to determine whether or not they want to put it on the ballot? Do you know what that is? Because the question that I have in my mind is, you know, if it's a straight question of whether we put the articles on to prohibit, I think that's a pretty simple question. You know, these are the five questions and it's to prohibit these five uses. I mean, it's a pretty simple, this is what we're recommending. In addition, in the event that the community doesn't prohibit these uses, we are in the process of drafting regulations. My question is, and I think it's a lead-in, is I think that the board is going to want to have information on, you know, the regulations, et cetera, but we're looking just to have a conversation on whether or not to put the five prohibition questions on?
Correct. I think that would be the start of the conversation.
I think what he's saying is rather than just one. Right. So to put them five separate versus just one question.
Okay.
There has been opinion voiced that it might be better to just go with the one question. Yeah, and we were of the opinion that give the people more choices rather than fewer. I know it complicates the question, but you know, I think.
I would agree because potentially if it doesn't pass, then all uses are allowed.
Correct. And I also think that it's really more of a, will the selectmen put this on, on the ballot?
Yeah.
And I don't see, I mean, I don't, I don't think that there's a push or a desire by them to not follow the logic of the board and put it on.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned with that.
I wouldn't be, well, we'll see.
But again, I, I'm concerned insofar as we haven't asked the question.
I just, I don't know that it necessitates a workshop.
Well, I don't think it necessarily.
I think it's a pretty state-forward question.
I think that they have a workshop that evening with other things. I think that doing it then would be a time where they can spend more than five minutes worrying about what's coming up behind them. And it would be the day after our next meeting and we would have had perhaps some more answers on craft cultivators. And we would be at a point where it would be a reasonable conversation.
I just think we're a long way from talking about what it would look like. I think that we're still kind of, you know, in the event that we craft regulations, I think that we're a long way from that point. If it's a simple question of whether we are proposing five questions and we identify what those questions are, which are very simple, to put these on the ballot, this is the rationale why we're proposing this way. I mean, it's a very simple question.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see why, I mean, you can get into a discussion over what the regulations are, but it honestly has nothing to do with.
No, they're two completely separate questions.
So it's, it's up to the selectmen, okay, are we going to give the voters the option to choose? Or are we going to keep it from them?
Again, the date I got was December 11th. I don't think it needs to be a full workshop. I don't think they're planning on devoting a whole meeting to it. But that's the date that the town manager said would work into the selectman's schedule as come and have, at least start this discussion.
To me, it might make sense to have a letter prepared prior to this board's next meeting so that we can review how we would phrase the questions
Sure.
and draft the rationale, you know, the statement behind why we're proposing this. So that the board can approve that and that's what's given to the selectmen in advance of their meeting.
Yeah, I don't anticipate, I mean, the law states that, you know, that we would have this, the referendum question stated that the people would have this opportunity. So you can't really take it away from them. The question really only is whether they're going.
It's actually worded in the opposite way. It's worded in that if you want to prohibit it, it has to be voted on.
No, 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 no. Question four said, yes, said if, in any case, if it's going to be allowed in the town, the town, the townspeople will be given a right to vote on it, on absolute prohibition or anything else. Go read the, if you read the question.
So the question that was voted on in town, I mean, voted on.
At the state.
State level.
Right, was only for.
Guarantees of vote?
Yes, for you to.
Prohibition?
Yes, at the town. Yes, at the town level, if you're going to allow it in town.
Well, then they can't deny it, then, because then they'd be in violation of the law.
Well, that's not exactly how I understood it. I understood because we are a yes town on the question for that we have to have the ballot with the bylaw.
Yeah.
But if we had been a no town, then we wouldn't be required to do that.
Right.
But as Lynn said, I do agree that this is a requirement by the state.
Yes, yes.
If we were a no town, what would happen?
We wouldn't have.
We would just have to have.
We could just do it by bylaw.
Yeah.
Do it by bylaw at town meeting.
So I think the form of the questions or question is really what we're discussing.
And I think it's important that we phrase those prior to the meeting with the board.
And I think the justification text is pretty straightforward.
So can we put that on the next agenda for the 10th? And we need a date and time certain, time certain to continue this? Should this also be on?
No, because this is just a public discussion.
Oh, okay.
It's not a.
No, no, but I mean, for us, we need a date and time.
We'll do it on the 10th.
So we'll do it on the 10th.
I'll try and get you some information for then and.
Yes, sir.
It should be straightforward.
And through the chair.
It should be. I mean, I think some of these questions will. Will need to go to the Cannabis Control Commission, and they're notoriously difficult to get hold of. I have some questions that I would like clarity from them on. And I don't know if now that they've started rolling licenses out, if they'll be a little bit easier to get a hold of or not, but I've called them on one or two other things, and it hasn't resulted in anything but me leaving a message.
So I understand the prohibition also is a double vote. I don't know if you realize that.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
It has to be voted on in a town election, and then it has to be voted on again at town meeting.
I understand.
And it has to pass both.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter which order.
It does, exactly.
But it has to pass both.
Before the elections.
Correct.
So that's going to make it more difficult, the meeting, the town meeting is before the election, so we won't have an electoral decision.
Right, so we would pass both bylaws.
We would pass the regulations in the event that the prohibition isn't.
Well, we would need to try, yeah.
The intent would be to pass both, to let the ballot have its efficacy.
Correct, but it could get shut down in town meeting.
Correct, and then the ballot initiatives would be.
And the ballot initiative is a moot point.
Couple of questions about craft. Up until now, all the uses we've located in industrial areas. I'm making some assumptions here, but if someone were to move into town, assuming that it fails prohibition and so on, we would have the opportunity for site plan review because it's a change of use, there's no existing marijuana uses, and so they would go through that whole process.
I disagree on that, but.
I would expect that you would have a bite at whatever special permit you have listed under the regulations.
Okay, so all of these will be under a special permit, then?
That was my understanding of our initial discussion.
Okay, but as far as change of use, if they already filed a Schedule F and they're required to for this, then I don't think that would be a change of use.
As a craft cultivator, if they were cultivating.
But the special permit's still going to kick in.
Ellie, we have any Schedule F in industrial doing?
Probably not. I don't know, but we hadn't gotten into the zoning discussion yet.
No, we got to pull that off. That's a huge.
We talked a little bit about it in general.
Schedule F isn't a zoning thing, it's a tax thing.
Right.
So this, Schedule F would be a farmer whose agriculture.
Yep.
Marijuana is exclusively not agriculture per mass general law, so it would probably be a change of use.
Well, this does say Schedule F, and Schedule F is.
Correct, but that's for tax purposes, not for zoning purposes.
Okay.
And I mean, I think that there's a lot of nuance to it.
That only applies to this use.
Correct.
It doesn't, yeah. What I'm getting at is, I feel like because the CCC is the licensing authority, we have limited control over what's going on here, so we need to be very careful and deliberate about how we craft our zoning because that's all we have, really.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, because when the CCC comes back and says, can you permit this, it's yes or no.
Right.
And the public hearing we have is really more of an informative thing, it's not.
No, I mean, in theory, you could deny someone for the special permit based on whatever special permit criteria you put in there. You could put criteria in there that has certain aspects to it that you could look at and subjectively look at, you know, two people proposing the same business and say no to one and say yes to the other based on the materials that they submit. I mean, we're talking about a subjective approval and license permit that you're issuing. So it's really based on the context of each individual parcel, the context of each individual application, and how those fit into the surrounding area and the impacts or potential impacts that they bring based on what they're showing and telling you.
But to Matthew's point, if the regulations, if the CCC is already including language that puts a spotlight on anyone filing a Schedule F, right, which would be a farm, then they clearly intend for farmers to become involved at some level.
Correct.
So we need to, you know, figure out how we're going to accommodate that.
Again, that's where I think the craft cultivator comes into play.
Yeah.
And I think what we need to do is have really clear guidance over what kind of size restrictions we want to have there, what kind of security restrictions we want to have there.
I think, yeah, I think developing objective, like black and white zoning criteria, I agree that special permits are subjective, but it opens the door for.
Good point.
Litigation.
It's much better to be more rigid than subjective.
I think it's two-tier. I think you can include black and white objective, but you can also include approval criteria, you know, here's our design criteria or our security criteria, and one of the approval criteria is meets those, and you could have other more subjective things that are part of standard special permit language or even maybe are more specific to marijuana special permits that give you that option to look at a denial based on someone presenting something that just doesn't feel or look right, even if they're meeting some of the more objective black and white-based stuff.
Right. All right, before we get too much further, we've already been an hour discussing this. Is there any public comment on this topic? Please.
All right, Katie Adams-Williams Drive, participating as a citizen. And first, I always like to say I support prohibition, and I think it'll just make everything easy, we won't have to worry about any of this. So then, in terms of listening to everything tonight, there's just so much gray area, potential for loopholes, and just think of every single abutter and every single small scenario that could potentially be impacted every time a loophole's found. So you see it with solar and everything else. Now all of a sudden, you're just going to trigger all over town people who are unknowingly next to a marijuana farm. And unknowingly, you know, and I just feel like it's just going to trickle in such a negative way to impact people all over town. And just seeing how people feel about being next door to just solar, well, I'll take a solar panel over a marijuana farm any day if it abuts my backyard, just in my overall opinion. And because the town was 53%, 50/50, every time one of these pops up, chances are about 50% of the abutters aren't going to have wanted it here at all. So I don't like the amount of gray area, so I would definitely try to zone it into keeping it, you know, in the same compartment that everything else is, so we can kind of understand how it'll impact people. And I guess my example that came to my mind was if we're going to just kind of allow a lot of little nightclubs, you know, it's like, oh, that's no big deal, I just abut that little nightclub versus a big nightclub. I don't know, if you take anything that somebody might not want to be next to, it's okay, it's just a small nightclub.
Yeah.
That is now in my backyard, so I'm comfortable with that. But if it were like a big nightclub, I'd, you know, be up all night. So that's how I feel about it, is it's like, if people don't want these uses in their backyard, but then all of a sudden it's a small one, does that mean it's just a small amount of crime? Just a little bit of a security concern in my backyard, not a big security concern? And I don't see the difference, so I would really make sure it doesn't pop up everywhere. Or I think alls we're going to have is stressed-out and worried neighbors abutting all these rogue uses, so, or just prohibit it, and we can all rest easy. All right, thanks.
Again, the only thing that we can prohibit is the retail?
Yes. No, no, we can prohibit anything.
Prohibit everything.
Retail is the only thing that we can limit.
Limit the number of retail facilities.
So you can propose a bylaw that limits the number of retail facilities to any percentage of your off-premise alcohol licenses, but if you go 20% or below, it needs a ballot vote to support it. If you're over 20%, you can limit it by right through bylaw.
Very good.
So we have eight off-premise licenses, so two marijuana retail facilities would have us up close to 30%. So we would.
Two, 25.
25%, you're right, I'm sorry.
And the previous imposition of the board, when we discussed that, had decided, had thought that it would be good to limit it to?
Yeah.
Just for the two new people.
I don't know if, I don't know if we, I don't know if either. Okay, excellent, excellent.
I just, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on, I do think it's incredibly important. I think the idea of the five questions makes sense, but I also think we really need to start talking the nitty-gritty of the regulations, because there's not that much time between now and town meeting. And I think it's important that we have this flushed out and really start getting into what is acceptable, what isn't. If the town prohibits it, then it's a moot point, but if the town votes to go forward, then I think it's incredibly important that we have a well-thought-out, framed bylaw concerning every use about exactly where it's allowed and under what conditions it would be allowed.
Yeah, my understanding is tonight is the last public discussion, and from now we go to drafting, correct?
We have one more, but again, I think, it was transporter. But again, I don't know that that's as.
Transporter?
Yeah. I don't know that that's as important, and if we're going to continue this on the town.
You just went on a 10-minute spiel about that, you missed that whole thing.
Jason Statham is going to come, and he's going to be the transporter.
So is there a sixth, is that a sixth use thing?
Well, craft cultivator is a specialty license under cultivator. So it's sort of, it's one, it's a subset of.
Four and a four-eighth.
Yeah.
So can you prohibit cultivator and allow craft cultivator?
No.
You can't, okay. So craft cultivator is a type of cultivator. So if you allow cultivator, you allow craft cultivator.
Correct.
Well, is it both ways?
Yeah.
It's a different license.
You could allow cultivation and not allow craft cultivation.
You prohibit by use, and it's one use.
It's a subset, you can't disallow the first one and allow the second.
I think if cultivation is prohibited, craft cultivation is prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
But not the other way.
That's his opinion.
Can you, but, yeah.
That would be my understanding.
You wouldn't really want the other way around, though.
No, you wouldn't want to.
No, you wouldn't want the other way around.
But we can regulate them separately, right?
Correct, yes.
So we can say cultivator is zoned here, and craft cultivator is zoned there.
Correct.
Right.
Have they actually issued final regulations, or are they still in draft?
No, they're final.
They're final?
I believe you guys have the final regulations.
Isn't that what this is?
I believe when I sent, I had sent you draft, and I think I ultimately ended up sending you the finals.
Oh, this is draft, I have draft.
Yeah.
As of 12/21.
There was a final issue on March 9th.
You sent an email with it?
I really thought that you had been sent.
Hard copies?
Yeah, if we could get hard copies of the final.
This is just stamped draft across it, so.
I'm almost positive that when they dropped, I sent them out to you by email.
But I have zero faith in the state not to turn around and change it right after we regulate the bylaw.
Yeah.
Oh, there's lots of changes being proposed already.
Yep, yeah, always.
Got to have a thick skin. We get the blame.
Is there any more public comment? Anybody else would like to speak on this? Ask any questions?
Moving on, all right.
All right, we still have the floor. Any further discussion on this topic?
No, but I agree with Paula, I'd like to get to drafting sooner or later.
Well, we need to get into the location.
Yeah, I expect that I can have you a draft by the end of the year. I have an unintelligible framework of notes that doesn't make sense to anybody, except maybe me.
Hopefully it gets translated better into the draft.
I can, once we've finalized stuff, I can start pulling it together a little bit more.
Is it possible that you could come to the next meeting also with a list of things that you need more clarification on?
Yep.
That would be great.
Forward. Mr. Chairman.
Through the fog.
Yeah?
Are we moving on?
Are we? We didn't talk about location.
Oh, I thought that we were going to have that discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Okay. Is that what we, guidebook, was that your understanding?
We're waiting for some clarification.
Super. So we're done with this?
The agenda is just public discussion of craft cultivator, not.
We've talked about locations on every other one.
Oh, I see you say so.
But there was some questions that led, that people were uncomfortable talking location until they had answers to those questions.
Okay, very good. So moving on to minutes approval.
No, no, sir, you have a preliminary guidebook discussion with MRPC.
I'm sorry. Can I blame that on the bifocals?
Yes, definitely. Hi.
Interesting discussion. All right.
Just got to figure out where to fit it in the guidebook.
It's not till next year. All right, so I am Karen Chapman, if you don't know me, from the Montrose Regional Planning Commission. I am doing this project under the District Local Technical Assistance Program for free, and I believe Adam sent you a draft at the beginning of the month, so hopefully you've been able to look at it and have lots of criticisms and comments. Nope, okay, excellent.
I have no criticisms.
We have, I believe, I haven't had a chance to review this thoroughly because I was just appointed, but the question that I have is, we have some comments from other departments.
Correct.
Yes.
And have those been forwarded to you already?
Yes, Marjorie was nice enough to send me. I have Elaine Peterson, Fire Chief, Assessor's Office, Sewer Commission, and that's it, unless there's any more. Okay. I expect the Conservation Commission will have comments.
All right, we'll see. We'll follow up with them and see if they have them.
All right.
I have a few small things, if you don't mind me starting.
Sure.
I appreciate that you had a picture at town hall. Can we get a better picture?
Yes.
Since it was painted?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I did say that in my email.
Oh, it did, I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
But it has a weather bean.
Oh, geez. Maybe she can, maybe she can Photoshop that in.
Did they take it off when they painted?
We can't find it.
Can't find it?
No.
It's a sore spot.
We've submitted an insurance claim.
On page seven, the question about can I tear down structures on my property without a permit? I love the demo delay section. I didn't see anything in there that says you actually need a demo permit, even if you, if it's only 25 years old.
Okay.
And some you will and some you won't, you know, based on size, but I'd hate someone to say, oh, well, really, I hate that old garage that they put on and, you know, I'm to say, oh, well, really, I hate that old garage that they put on and, you know, I'm just going to tear it down and decide to start doing it and, well, the book didn't say I needed that and, you know, I know there's all the caveats in there, but someone will be upset.
What timeline did you say for demolition?
What timeline?
He said 25 years.
I said if it's 25 years old and they're like, oh, well, I don't need demo delay, I can just tear down whatever I want.
Doesn't demo delay only apply to...
75 and older. But what I'm saying is it doesn't say you need a demo permit. So if they looked at this and said, oh, that's only 25 years old, I don't need demo delay, I can just tear it down.
Okay.
On page 11, if I told you I use a data sheet, I'm sorry, I don't. First paragraph, first full paragraph of the page means for the applicant to review the proposal and the applicant subsequently receives a data sheet that identifies all permits necessary in the process of review to gain approval.
I got that from your website.
Oh, we'll have to change our website.
Or make a data sheet.
Or make a data sheet, but I, I do meet with them, I do talk with them, we talk about what permits may be required and go through it, but we don't hand out any sort of like notated list of, of permits.
Okay, so you just discuss...
Yeah, we discuss...
The permits that are needed.
Correct. And what departments they may need to speak with and that kind of stuff. Where on our website was that?
Probably on the plant, on the Land Use Director. Or in the process, the new process.
Okay, I'll have to look that out, look that up, go in and change it. And on page 12, you're missing a picture. Oh, I didn't get a picture on mine.
I didn't get a picture of mine either.
No, mine either.
Yeah, interesting. Where? Right here, the box. Oh, the box. That's where the picture of us goes.
Fantastic.
I can think of some emoticons we could put in there.
So the flow chart actually has a reference to it where it is, was located, right? Is that what you were questioning?
No.
That was one of my questions for you. Do you want me to put the, I believe the flow chart is in 215? That you have made a flow chart of how the process goes?
That's an old flow chart.
Then I'll take a no for that.
Yeah, I would, that's a hard pass.
Okay.
And these flow charts in the back of here are yours? Or are those the ones you took from?
Yeah, from Berkshire.
Yeah, so it's not, this isn't, this is, I say yours, this is not, you're not replicating what was here.
No. No, the special permit and the variance I did, and then the other two I got from Berkshire.
No, that was all the comments I had, it looks good.
Thank you.
Those are good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we just go back to the demo permit? I want to understand that. So the question is can I tear down, tear down structures on my property without a permit? Is a demo, demo permit required for the demolition of any structure in Lunenburg? Okay, so that's, and then it should be a separate that demolition delay bylaw applies to any building over 75 years.
Correct, it would be no, you can't tear it down without a permit, you need demolition permit.
Okay, so it's two separate answers.
And, well, two separate paragraphs of the same answer, I think.
Right, right, but, right.
It would be no, period, and then description of the demolition permit and then the demolition delay bylaw.
If your property is, you know, historical.
It's not, I would put the 75 years because historical is going to change because it's a moving target under the demolition delay bylaw.
Yeah, even under the APD, it's 75.
Right, so it should state 75 years or older.
While we're on the questions and answers, the yellow can I take down trees on my property without a permit?
Yeah.
I know that the Scenic Road Act applies, but I couldn't find anywhere where there was a process.
Yeah.
It's in...
There's a caliper as well, I think.
Yeah. Six and up.
Geez, where is that?
So if it's not six inches diameter or greater, then it doesn't fall into that.
Right.
I don't know if this is applicable for this, but any property within the Hickory Hills area that's part of the Hickory Hills Association needs a permit from the Hickory Hills...
From the Landowners Association. So yeah, that's separate from this.
But I just, but I do think that because we know that's a listing regulation, if we put out a document saying, yes, you can cut down the tree...
That's not zoning, Paula.
But I think you may want to say if you belong to an association...
I think that, I think that's the way to do it.
Then you may want to check with their regulations.
Yes.
Because we know they exist.
Correct. I think that's a, that's a...
I don't think you should say what they are.
No, I think that's a fine way to phrase it. If you, if you belong to a homeowners association or...
Or a part of a community association.
Or a part of, yeah.
Or Hickory Hills Landowners Association, you need to confirm with them about their restrictions.
That should probably be like a footnote or a foremention or something.
For the whole document.
Right?
Right, because, because that applies to a number of different things in that particular area of town.
So I... In, in several areas of town.
Right, right, so, right, exactly. Like, I don't know if, I don't know if Lake Shirley has different restrictions, I don't know.
No, but there are several communities, planned residential areas where you have exclusive use.
Like Stone Farm or Woodlands or, that if they are a member of an, you know, any type of organization such as that, then it's their responsibility to check with those organizations.
I might stick that somewhere in the purpose. You know, just a note that's...
As a caveat.
Yeah, caveat, this is for town regulations only if you, you know, live in a condo or homeowners association, the, or landowners association, there may be additional deed restrictions and regulations you need to follow to be able to...
So I'm slow, but to back this up, is back on the demolition permit?
Yep.
Question? We require review by the Historic Commission even for buildings that are not in the Historic Preservation District?
No. Only if they're 75, well, if they're over 75 years, yes.
So every...
It's townwide.
So every property, townwide?
Yes. And they can put a demo delay up to 18 months.
Even if it's not in the Historic Preservation Area?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
That has to be approved by the EG first.
Well, yeah, but...
So it's not quite in effect, the 18 months.
Where, where are scenic roads?
Northfield, Lancaster.
I don't know where, in the... Where they are.
And do you require a public hearing with the tree warden?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, everything you wrote about scenic roads was right.
Okay.
Well...
I just couldn't find an application or a...
We require a public hearing, but not, the tree ward's never here. Well, just because he's not here doesn't mean it's not a public hearing with the tree warden.
Oh, oh!
I can't compel him to be here.
Okay.
He knows about it. The application is on our website.
Okay.
So I can get you a link to that.
You have a small typo on page four too. You refer to a heating permit, you refer to it as a hearing system instead of a heating system. Third block, third box down.
Do you hear your heating system?
Usually if I hear my heating system, it means it needs servicing.
Board's pine, you're burning.
Which is a bad idea.
So on page four, I have this disclaimer about the bylaws and they take precedence. Do you want me to put this other disclaimer about contacting?
Oh, that actually might be a good place for it, yeah. And you've got all that extra room.
Okay. The other Q and A that's yellowed, how many animals can I have on my property?
Oh, no.
I couldn't find this anywhere.
We're not going to have this discussion again, small flock?
Well, you know, sometimes you can have 20 chickens, but not anymore. You can have four dogs, but no more.
Anybody, small flock? Our zoning allows for the non-commercial keeping of pretty much any animal. Or animals. But you're going to have to meet the Board of Health regulations.
Okay.
So if you want 20 chickens and you can feed, house, and properly contain them per the Board of Health regulations and you're not selling the eggs...
So I put that Lunenburg has a livestock regulations administered by the Board of Health, but that's not true because that was Shirley.
Okay.
That had a livestock regulation, so I didn't know.
We don't have any regulations as far as...
We're supposed to have barn inspections by the Animal Control Officer. The Board of Health does regulate health and safety of farms.
Yeah, I think they do the standard CMR stuff that's required.
What triggers that?
Good luck finding anything in black and white.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that triggers that.
I can put contact the Board of Health before obtaining animals.
Well, I mean, there's also, there's also some condo associations or land, land associations that say things about animals, but in our zoning bylaw, you're allowed without limitation farm animals in the outlying district. And it's in, in residential A and B, it's, it's with limitations.
Yeah, there are limitations.
But no, outlying districts, it's without limitation unless that got changed, and I don't think we spoke about changing it.
I think the limitations is, is in residents A and B is the non-commercial. Doesn't say you can't have...
Right, right.
You could have 20 horses if you have enough land and, and the ability to maintain them as long as you're not...
I think rez was limited.
There are limits.
There's even limits on dogs, you can't have more than three dogs or something like that unless you're a kennel. Yeah, somewhere in there.
You have a kennel, that requires a kennel license.
Yeah, it requires a kennel license, right. So it's in there, it's stuck in there. It's either in this one or the other one.
I'm disagreeing now.
No, it could be in the other one, the general bylaws.
Oh.
Yeah, it could be the general bylaw. The kennel license is required, I know.
Well, kennel license is different though, right?
Yes, kennel license is different.
But it's more than three dogs.
Yeah. So there is a limit.
It's very specific.
You can have three dogs without a kennel license. The raising or keeping of poultry, saddle horses, livestock, or other farm animals for non-commercial use on properties that are not exempt under the General Law is 48, Section 3.
Where are you reading that from?
That's from section 250, 4.2A2.
So not a farm...
Oh, that, you have the new zoning.
So not in agriculture.
Not, yeah, not, not, not under the exemption.
Okay.
See, this got changed and I don't recall us talking about changing it.
Oh, man, we talked about that for so long.
We talked about it a lot.
We talked about that at least, at least a dozen meetings over like six months.
I remember flock versus small flock, but I don't remember...
Accessory uses.
250 what, 4.1 what?
250 4.2A2.
I will look that up. And I will also say contact the Board of Health.
The Board's feeling, as I recall, was that we don't care what you have for animals as long as you can keep them and you're not doing it commercially and you can do it in a reasonable way.
Yeah, the trouble is we don't define reasonable.
Well, correct, but...
So, so the trouble is that from a Q and A perspective, our regulation doesn't answer the question.
I can remove it.
How many animals can I have on my property? Don't answer that. We basically say as many as you want is what the regulation says.
Pretty much.
So all of this that you have on here about requiring livestock permits and all that, none of that, there's, there's no requirements for manure management plan in Lunenburg?
I think you should, I'll check with the Board of Health and see if they have anything that they would recommend and have them send some language that would answer that because they're going to be the governing body on, on that. You know, you have to be able to provide three-sided shelter, you have to have adequate room to exercise the animal, you have to have adequate food and water, and all of that is state-regulated to a degree. And like Matt, like the Chair said, through, through the barn inspections, they're supposed to manage that. Whether they do or not is, you know, between them and the state.
But, okay. Where does, where does barn inspection come in from a state perspective for non-commercial properties?
I think that's a local thing.
It's not a state thing.
The local inspector has to do it, they have to fill out the barn book and send it back to the state.
For a, for a non-commercial location. So if I put up a, a lean-to stable on my property and I have two horses, you're telling me that that triggers something where someone has to come inspect the barn?
I believe so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And maybe I'm, I'm misremembering it.
Yeah, I think you're wrong.
And again, my experience with that was in a different community and they inspected a number...
Ashby, absolutely.
They inspected a number of...
It's highly regulated, but...
Of non, non-commercial barn establishments.
Yeah.
Where people were keeping horses for their own purpose and that the, the animal inspector would annually...
Unless we know for sure, I think it's cleaner to take it out.
Well, and that's why I'll check with the Board of Health and see what their...
Yeah, but it's going to, they have to reference something that's documented, they can't just go by, hey, we'd like to, we'd like to do this. Hey, this sounds like a great idea, let's get a livestock permit. But I don't think we have any such thing today.
Correct.
Okay.
Page nine, I yellowed out, it is recommended that a pre-submission discussion occur with the Building Commissioner?
Yep.
Does that happen?
Yes.
Okay.
Constantly.
I thought so.
Takes up about half of his time.
I bet. And so the, the chart at the end, I took, you had sent it to me, so I just cleaned it up and stuck it on there.
So you, there's a couple of alterations that were made to it that I'll send you offline.
Okay.
I mean, nothing, nothing major, it's three small letter additions and a deletion of a note.
Do you want to memorialize the process of having a large project like we had with the solar company come in to us with a pre-submission discussion at some point, like in the, in the Under Planning Board?
It's in there.
Just in case, not that you're going to go anywhere, but, you know, in case you were to leave.
Trying to get rid of me?
In case you were to leave so that we had, you know, it's memorialized, I like that, I really think it's an important part of the process now.
Is it in there?
I might have missed it.
No, I guess that's more when they come to talk to me and the technical review. I'll write you a paragraph about...
Pre-submission.
Our pre-submission meetings, it's in our rules and regs.
One thing about Shirley's, they insisted that I put these footnotes that say what the actual website of the link is.
I think that's great.
I couldn't understand why they wanted that because if they were looking on the computer, they would click the link, so, and if they were reading it, they wouldn't have a computer to put the website into. I just, you know what I mean? But it's fine, it's in there, I'll keep it in there. Those were all the questions I had for you.
So I found the, I found a clarifier for the how many animals can I have? It's not, it's not how many, doesn't, doesn't speak to that, but it does speak to other use, it's in our new zoning, I mean, our new use chart. It is 4.1N other uses and it's 4.1N1 agriculture is yes across all the districts.
Yes.
So they are allowed in all districts, but to your question of how many, that's...
I think that chart refers to exempted agriculture.
Right, it's properties that don't fall under the agricultural, agriculture.
Right. So 10 or more acres and 5 or more acres.
Five.
Well, it's 10 for Chapter 61, it's 5 for Chapter 61A.
And it could be two.
61 and 61A are, are not agriculture, they're tax programs. Agriculture is the actual activity happening on the parcel.
We talked about lowering it to two, but I don't think it passed, is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct, you can, yeah, you can apply, right?
48.
48, section three, prescribes five and two acres.
I thought it was two, two acres, yeah.
It is two acres based on, on a specific cash production per acre.
Yeah, we have to prove income.
That's the agricultural exemption.
Correct.
48, section three. But the 61A is the tax.
Correct.
Code, not zoning.
Now, but the chart refers to the 48.
Yes.
Correct.
Exempted uses.
Correct.
Correct. And so, what this is saying, this, what this is saying is, if you're not exempt under chapter 48, section three, which means you don't have two acres that you're using for some commercial use, or five acres and whatever you want use, it says the raising or keeping of poultry, saddle horses, livestock, or other fine animals for non-commercial use are allowed. So, we're saying, you're allowed under chapter 48, section three, and you're also allowed, even if you don't.
Anywhere, in town.
Correct. You can have chickens and goats if you're not, you know, if you're not selling any profit.
Residential and outlying districts, not anywhere.
Okay.
So, basically, what we're saying is, if you're residence A, and you have one acre, you would not fall under chapter 48, section three, but you could sell chickens.
Yeah. You could do it on a quarter of an acre.
Yes.
Correct. Yep.
Now, if, if, if you can't contain your chickens, if your chickens are messy or causing a problem, then you call the board of health and they step in and regulate based on the nuisance contained.
Yeah.
But it's not a zoning violation, it's a nuisance violation.
So, that's an accessory use, what you were just reading on that, page 25?
Correct.
But in the general zoning, in all zones.
Yes, agriculture as a primary use is allowed across the zoning districts per 48.3.
Correct.
And you can be a 48.3 use and not be filed under 61A. I don't think there's a lot of them who do that, because the tax benefits of 61A are what allow you to be able to do 48, section three uses, but the two are, are not connected necessarily.
Karen, is this going out to other boards for their approval?
Yes, they've all seen it.
Oh, they have, okay. So, you got comments?
I'm waiting for comments from board of health and CONCON.
And I'll, I'll.
I mean, those are the most important things.
I'll go and stand in the hall between both of their offices and speak very loudly about it.
Much, much good mead, do you? Birth reg.
Oh, yeah.
Can't find the application.
Right.
Elaine commented on that on her.
On the website.
Okay.
I don't think the guidebook was the only impetus for that. I know there's a couple of people who have been looking for it as well.
Yeah, I haven't incorporated the comments yet.
Now, that actually falls in the same zoning group, 4.1N, right?
Can I just ask, on 23, what is it, on sewer commission number three, what is it, II fee or a 1-1 fee or?
II fee, and inflow and infiltration. It's when water that is not from an approved blackwater sewage use enters the sewage system, and what it does is it ups the cost of sewage disposal, it increases the gallonage that we're disposing, and can cause sewer overflows at the plant and plant issues.
So, we might wanna spell that out if it hasn't been mentioned earlier?
The sewer commission did spell it out, inflow infiltration, and then they added, for large projects greater than 15,000 gallons per day, the applicant will pay an additional II removal and/or capacity fee as required by the DEP.
Yeah, they had extensive changes.
Yeah, which is great. I don't wanna put anything in there that they don't agree with.
Rest of it looks really good. Where's the part that says, all of this will change like that if we wanted to?
Everything is not. The part where it says Town of Lunenburg. Any municipal government changes constantly. Everything is non-binding.
Yeah.
Hey, that's an important point, though. I think it's important to put that. This guide is, is, you know.
As of this date.
As of this date.
Yeah, definitely.
Subject to constant changing.
And it is subject to change. I think that's important.
Yeah.
Thought I read that in here somewhere.
I think that should be right on the front.
Yeah, it says that all the rules and regulations, bylaws, take precedence over any information contained within this guidebook, or any conflict between them.
Just put it a little bit simpler. I would just say something as, you know, these, this permitting guide is effective as of this date, with regulations currently in effect. Consult with various boards regarding any regulation changes, or something, just.
No, we could just keep the draft stamp on it indefinitely.
Might be easier.
One thing in the, in the contact information, there was no email for the assessors?
Yeah, you didn't get that, he didn't send that?
Oh, is it on that?
It's in the comments.
I'm sorry.
And they also talk about doing business certificates in their comments?
Yes.
Adding that.
Yeah, that's an either-or thing, I can take that out.
One other small item you could put in here is a, on the zoning map, include a URL to the zoning map.
Okay.
Because it's virtually unlegible, 'cause it's.
Yes. I was gonna ask if you had a clearer one.
And see.
Question on the format that we receive this. When we talk about changes, in the event that regulations did change, do we receive this in a PDF, or do we receive it in a file that we can amend?
I will send both a PDF for the website and a Word that can be changed.
Yeah, we can update it as necessary.
That would be great.
But you guys aren't gonna change anything else anytime soon.
Well, we may not change, but other, other boards may change their regulations.
No, they're not allowed to.
Or if permits alone.
We'll have to send a memo with this.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I can have this done for your 10th meeting on the 10th?
Sounds good.
Do you want me to come with it, or send it, or?
I don't know, ask them.
Get, get you in a little sooner, maybe?
Put me at the top of the agenda?
Yeah, we can put you at the top, yeah.
Yeah, it should be quick. And do you want me to send it ahead of time?
Yeah, if you would. I mean, as long as I have it the, like, the Wednesday before.
Okay. And it's the 10th, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, can we do minutes?
Yes.
You'd like to. I'm sorry?
Caving, change the order.
Second time's a charm.
Yeah.
We don't have time to do it, right? We got time to do it twice.
Hey, that was DOT, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that doesn't look bad on us.
It wasn't, yeah, it was the state.
Yeah.
We own Flat Hill, that's ours.
That's not even done, huh?
I know.
Done the top course.
But they can't do the top course till they fix whatever's causing the bottom course to fall apart.
I've already got a two-inch lip at my driveway.
Oh, you guys read them now?
We can, or, you know.
Move, we accept the minutes from 11:51.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Good catches.
Uh, 20, oh, that was the, yeah. Move, we accept the minutes from 11:20, 18.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Epstein?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you much. So, those are mine. Committee reports? Oh, that's, we should've done that in reorganization as well, shouldn't we? We can do that now. So, what do we got open? Green Communities Task Force is open.
That's pretty much it.
No.
Oh, and charter review.
We were gonna discuss whether or not we even want to.
Be liaisons?
Yeah, have a liaison.
Okay, so MJTC?
I'll, I'll keep it.
Okay, and MRPC is Tanner. Okay, so, that, that is the only thing that Green.
Those ones we have to have.
Oh, wait a minute, MJTC, we have an issue.
Yeah, 'cause we're both.
Paula and I are both attending.
I am the selectman's designee for MJTC.
That's okay.
It's not an issue, really.
Oh, can, that's not an issue, then?
No, 'cause the selectmen have designated her their representative.
Okay.
But we could double down on that and, and.
No, you couldn't, 'cause we have two seats. Lunenburg has two seats.
We have two seats.
One for the planning board, one for the selectmen.
Okay.
So, Paula has been appointed by the selectmen, Ken has been appointed by the planning board.
You couldn't sit in two seats?
I'm sorry?
You couldn't sit in two seats?
I might be able to. I'm a lot bigger than Paula.
Matthew, you're Stormwater, right?
I am.
And Ag.
And Ag, and capital planning.
Who's charter review? Oh, all right, so we have to discuss.
Yeah, I think we should try to make a change there.
So, is that on the agenda later on?
So, we have Green Community Charter Review, and what else?
Green Community.
I think it falls under the reorganization.
That's it. So, would, does anybody have a, a burning desire to be a part of the Green Communities Task Force?
Well, the, you wouldn't be part of it, you would be a liaison. If you chose to then ask the selectman to appoint you, you could.
What he said. Anybody? Anybody?
No.
We need one?
No.
Nope.
Board doesn't need any liaison.
How, how active has the Green Community Task Force been?
Not very.
I think they'll be a little more active now that they've received a grant, but they're not setting policy. They're spending money that's granted to them by the state.
The last thing I heard them do is they put, like, LED lights up at the high school or something, right?
Yeah, and I think they're gonna do some boiler work somewhere, they're gonna do an efficiency study and some, maybe some window work. It's not, I mean, this, this is nuts and bolts, building envelope and system work for the most part.
I don't see a big overlap with planning, but.
So, then we should've gotten some credit for the new high school replacing the old one, and there was talk about buying on poles.
It's, it's, they're working on the poles, it's a lot more nuanced than the old high school being replaced by the new one.
Okay, and the, the police chief is requesting that we look into the.
Prius?
The, not Prius, but, but that, that type of the hybrids, yeah, which would, which would also be credit. So, I mean, it's not.
Hybrid police cars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ford's coming out with a hybrid.
So far, they're the only one, supposed. So, if we don't feel we need one, I guess, 'cause listening to Greg in the past year plus, yeah, they still haven't met, no, no, no meeting, so.
But even when they do meet, like I said, I, I don't really see a whole lot of overlap with planning, like the rest of the, the committees that were involved in. There's generally some kind of an overlap with planning or land use or something, but the Green Community is, like I said, they're talking about replacing lights with LED lights, I'm not sure.
No, if we were, if we were following the MGL designation of what a planning board is supposed to do, then we would be doing so much more. I don't know if anybody's ever read the MGL section, what, 80, 80A to JJ or something? There's well over.
81.
Yeah, there's a lot.
This is, this was part of why this was spun off, right?
I think so, so.
So, so we didn't have to.
Well, I mean, we still should have some connection to, anyways, I just.
All right, well, we can have a participant, we just need a volunteer.
Well, either we need a volunteer, or we need to decide not to have a liaison. That's basically the bottom line.
Or we could appoint somebody, or recommend somebody that isn't on the board, correct?
If you had somebody who wished to do that, yes.
Can we run through every, I don't know who, who does what, can we?
Oh, sure, sure. I'm on capital planning, I'm on Stormwater Task Force, I'm on the Agricultural Commission.
I'm on MJTC.
I'm Open Space.
I'm MRPC.
And.
Michael Ray was charter review committee.
Technically still is, right?
Technically, well, yeah, but I mean, we're reorganizing, so.
Okay. So.
Well, I can do Green Community Task Force, if they meet.
If they.
If they meet.
Charter review.
I'm not doing charter review.
Sure you don't wanna do charter review?
I don't wanna do charter review.
So, we need a nomination and.
I nominate Paula for Green Community Task Force.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
Would've been funny if Paula said nay.
That was what the discussion was for. So, do we wanna have a discussion about charter review committee?
Please.
Have you got any?
I don't want for us, no?
Okay. I mean, I, I received one update on charter review from our current representative. Those of you who were at town meetings saw, they presented a fairly comprehensive presentation on the amendments they're proposing for the charter. I don't know how much heavy lifting is left for the charter review committee. It sounds like, at this point, they have settled on their approach and their changes, and they're looking to start shopping the product to boards, committees, and the public. Now, that doesn't mean that there isn't work to be done as far as dialing it in and working on it, and, you know, the planning board is included in that process by charter, so there's historically a, a relevance to the planning board participating. So, it's, we've been kind of shut out of the process since, it's November now, since maybe August, and I don't know how often they've met since then, but we don't, because we don't have any update. I know.
That's my question. I know they've met because they met on, they meet on similar nights.
Correct.
As the ad hoc.
And there, there's been, you know, discussion from the board about actually having representation and participatory representation in that process, and it doesn't, it doesn't appear that we have that.
Record for that from our.
I mean, I could contact them and get an attendance record, but we were told we would be getting regular updates upon things happening, and that has not been the case.
Okay.
Is the planning board member of the charter review committee a voting member?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, all of these other are voting, or?
No.
Or liaison?
They're all liaison with the exception of capital planning, MRPC, and MJTC.
Open Space, I can.
Oh, and Open Space, I apologize.
All right, so, so actually, most of them are voting.
Most of them are, yeah. AGCOM, Green Communities are the only ones that are not voting.
MJTC, we don't really vote, we just make recommendations.
Well, yeah, you're a participatory member, you're, you're not just a viewer.
Right.
And I'm also an appointed member of the AGCOM, so, change that.
So, what, what do we wanna do about charter review?
Someone felt strongly about it, so, if someone would like to start it, if someone would like to start a discussion about it?
I was gonna just say, I'll nominate Tanner to be the new charter review committee representative.
Okay.
Second.
Now we can have a discussion.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you, Tanner.
Happy to participate.
He's gonna go to his first meeting, come back, they disband the planning board.
Planning board's now three members for 10-year terms.
Oh, man.
Okay, so, now we get to the reports. Paula can't give that one, so we won't get that. Capital planning committee, we met last Tuesday with, with fire and police, got their requests. It seems we have a large amount of money to, to spend this year, so we're not really getting real scrutin, we're not really scrutinizing at this point. We've got another meeting tomorrow, we're going to meet with DPW, I believe, and after that we'll start to prioritize. Stormwater Task Force, we have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be, I believe, this Thursday?
This Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Thursdays.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tree lighting is Thursday. She moved it, to avoid tree lighting.
Oh, that's right, that's after capital planning. Yes, yes, yes. The Agricultural Commission was not able to meet due to quorum. MJTC?
Next meeting is coming up in a couple of weeks. I already reported on the last meeting, so, no, no updates on MJTC.
Oh, Open Space, sure.
Open Space, yeah. We meet, I'm gonna say we're gonna meet Wednesday. Getting close to finishing up, we've got the final, well, final drafts for us in our hands, and it's gotta go out to all the various boards, we're looking for support of it. And that's it, I think we're gonna do some final edits on Wednesday, and then hope to get it out sometime in December.
Excellent.
Oh, I would like to say, though, just as a side note. It's surprising that, and I don't know if everybody knows this, but like Marshall Park, I'm sure I've mentioned this before, but there's like a, there's a full track over there, there's tennis courts that have been hidden for years, under vines and overgrowth, and they, I'd like to see the Parks Department, you know, get an opportunity through some grant money to bring that back. I think if the community could rally behind that, it could be, you know, a real gem for the town.
Now, Parks is three people, right?
It's two, I believe.
Well, Jack, if you wanna include.
It's a three-member.
Yeah.
Group.
Yeah.
That might be nice to see if we could increase.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to need some support in the future on that and other things.
MRPC?
No update, no meeting.
Okay. And then no update on the charter review?
That's correct.
Come on, Tanner, no update on charter review?
I'm quick, but I'm not that quick. No meeting.
No meeting. So I just want to confirm, are we looking at meeting with the selectmen on the 11th? Are we hoping to push that off further into the month?
I can meet, it's a.
You can do a December 11th meeting, but like I said, it should be short because.
Oh, I agree. I don't think there's an expectation.
And answering any questions, I would.
Correct, I don't think there's an expectation that's a long meeting, but.
But I think like Paula suggested, if we review something on the 10th.
In writing, yeah.
Yeah, in writing.
And submit it to them.
Just show up. We're in, we're out.
And, you know, we have solar energy systems on here. I think that, you know, once we get pot sorted out, we'll probably be looking to attack that next, and there may be some other stuff that comes up that we would hope to turn around for town meeting in May, not May, in November.
And just to confirm, the meeting with BOS was about the ballot questions?
Correct. You've all seen your notices and communications. Paula, you'll start getting them. We scan them and send them off to you, and what these are are notices from surrounding communities on permits that have been filed and permits that have been issued that are statutorily required to send to us. They're really thrilling and super exciting. Marjorie does a great job of highlighting the important stuff so you can see what it is, but it's not, it's not going to be something you spend a lot of time reading over, but it lets you know what sort of the surrounding communities are seeing and dealing with.
Try not to dance in your seats.
Okay, I'll try to contain my excitement.
All right, meeting schedule. All boards meeting, all board meetings are held at town hall 6:30 unless otherwise indicated. December 10th, we're going to be discussing marijuana transporter.
And we'll be shifting that to craft marijuana cultivator.
And.
And I think we might have a quick conversation about transporter, but I don't even know if we need to have anything about that.
And ballot questions.
And the ballot questions, yes.
And then we've got.
Yeah, so we have a public hearing that night.
And we've got the.
Yeah. For. Powellstone and gravel.
And the 14th and the 28th, they're open still?
As of now. I imagine we'll be talking a lot of pot those two nights.
Pot. 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 Public comment. Any? No? 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 Okay. Seeing none. 14, ongoing items. Earth removal permitting?
Yeah, I still owe you a final draft of that to kick that process off for May.
Okay. Village of Flat Hill drainage?
Yep, I think they've complied with what they were requested to do, and we'll see how that plays out in May.
In May, as far as?
Or as far, I guess I'll say March, once it starts raining and melting.
Okay.
What the impact on Flat Hill Road is.
Well, it's pretty visible right now. Economic development?
We continue to work with the Business Town Partnership. In conjunction with D L T A, we're seeing, we're not seeing, we're creating a brochure that highlights the benefits of coming and being in town, and we're getting input from the business community on that, and we should see that done by the end of the year.
So what?
Does that come to this board or how does that work?
No, it's, it's something that Heather and Karen and myself have been working with the business community on from the perspective of highlighting just what's in town and the existing businesses and the existing amenities that we have from a recreational and farm perspective.
Okay. One of the, you know, several years ago, I don't know how many now, we were looking at the economic development component of the master plan, and that ended abruptly.
When Carl almost died.
Yeah, with that.
That was abrupt.
So are we going to, are we going to revisit that?
Yes, we can, we'll be revisiting that. We're looking at, there's some potential grant funding coming up in the next year for doing some master plan stuff. The selectmen recently formed an economic development committee.
Okay.
That I believe will have at least one member of this board, if not two.
I would be very, very interested in that.
So I think all of that is moving in that direction. There are a lot of master plan elements that should move forward.
Because MRPC had done a lot of work, and we were in the process of just looking at that work.
And I think.
When it just stopped. So I'm wondering if it's worth revisiting that, if it makes sense to just redo the whole thing, or we never really discussed what MRPC had done.
Probably some combination of the two. I, you know, I was, I'd been here for, I think, three weeks, and Carrie threatened to fire me if bad stuff stopped happening, if didn't stop happening at meetings I went to. But I've reviewed it maybe six or eight months ago, and I think that there's a lot of recommendations that could probably be drilled down into a little bit more, and I think the demographics would still stand up because it's using decennial census stuff, which we're not going to have new stuff for another three or four years. We've got. If we ever have new stuff.
By May, some of that stuff's already, yeah, some of it's already, you know, being hashed out by the open space committee. We've got a lot of, you know, we've already done some of the stat work.
Yeah.
The numbers, so, you know, you can pull from that.
Correct. So, I mean, it is something that could be revisited.
Definitely. So you said that there's a recently formed economic development committee?
I believe that they set a charge for it.